Like a weird early morning town.
All our meeting.
No touch man.
I'll be here at eight A M.
That's a great.
Martin Tink special meeting. And after school call for form please.
Mrs. Vickers.
Here.
Mrs. Gold. Here, Mrs. Norrington.
Here.
Mrs. Carey. Mister Kelly.
Okay, um.
Send the pledge please.
First again, I have.
The pledge is to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice.
Give me motion to adopt president please. Second. Jerome Peggy, uh any changes or additions to the agenda?
No.
Wish to approve this. Motion on favor, I.
Aye.
opposed. Uh curious four O one. And public comment on agenda items. You have your members of the public present. Um so we will begin with our annual discussion for bylaws and policy stuff.
Uh we have several for you to review uh today. Um to bring people up to staff. I will, uh Mark will be here in a couple minutes, he's running a little bit behind. But without, I think you can probably start regardless. If there are specific questions, you can look back. So I'll start with policy three zero zero one and the assistant superkill as well. Either most of them are theirs in their area, so they're gonna take the bulk of today's discussion, so.
They are.
Mister Dixon.
All right, happy to take this one on. Uh this is very straightforward, we're just replacing the term basic aid with community funded in our financial reserve policy, that's the only change.
Was there a reason, was that just somebody's role now or something?
It's something that came up at school services in California where community funded describes the bulk of your funding versus making basic aid just the minimum.
Okay.
So to capture what we truly are, community funded districts, we wanna use using those terms in our policy.
Oh, okay. Oh, okay. I'll bring this forward as a first reading.
All right.
Good morning. Okay, next is uh thirty seventy, sale disposal of books, but in this class.
I will take this one as well.
Yes.
Thanks President Fisher. Um this lays out the guidelines for um surplusing materials, buy books, any obsolete materials. Uh there's a twenty five hundred dollar threshold where we can surplus at hardest question, beyond that we can go out bid and auction it formally. Um this spoke out. Essentially, when we can surplus and when we have to go out.
Okay.
Well, and I'm glad that Mark walked in, cause I think I have a couple questions. In the first paragraph. And BP three two seven zero. Um sentence of it. The second sentence. Yeah, so when the board. When the board upon recommendation of superintendent or designated declares any personal property unusable obsolete or no longer needed, the board shall determine the estimated value of the property. The board is really determining or someone a designee will, and they'll tell the board, but the board doesn't know.
We would make a recommendation, staff make a recommendation to the board.
It would come in that, when we had that on there, it gives that value in the agenda item.
Right, but we're not making, no, we're not making, we're not determining estimated value, you don't want us to go and research, no, estimated value.
Staff would do the research for us.
So change that to staff.
No, cause the qualifying statement is about this, is when the board upon recommendation of superintendent or designated declares any district own personal property, the board self determines.
Yeah. Yeah.
So I think the, my way of having it maybe.
Oh, so the board should determine comma.
It would, it would come to you, it was, it would come to you as an action to declare it obsolete, et cetera, and.
Or J action.
With the value attached.
With the value attached.
So but we're not determining the value, so with the value, so instead the word determine is really the word.
So. So we want, do you want that, then we approve the determined value?
Yeah, I don't want approved.
And it's an estimated value.
But firm, firm means like you vote either ways, you firm, is that correct?
I said approve, approve.
I know, like approved would be. I don't know, I don't know what the right, what legal word is there. But we're voting, we're taking some action on the estimated value.
So.
I just don't want to look like the board's gonna go figure out the estimated value, like I read it three or four times, you know, it's not what it's saying, but there, so I don't know if, yeah. I don't know what the word is, whether it's a firm or a prudent.
Well, we're, we're also not going to make the decision if it's still needed, sold or disposed of, that comes in the recommendation, so.
Right.
Yeah, I, I think that word is lifted from the staff who've been thinking.
Just like that?
Yeah, and, and um you know, an example I'm thinking of is a uh unfortunate circumstance, but a layoff resolution.
I didn't think of that.
Um same thing in the language, the board determines that staff will be reduced for the following year.
Okay.
It always comes in the form of an action or a resolution and a staff recommendation um regarding, in this case, the um value. So I don't think, I don't think determine uh.
Does the word they use as that? After, after determine, then is it the, instead of, the use of that determines that, the estimate we add the word that? I don't know, I just read it, I just read it and thought, maybe there's something we have to do, but if it's, that's how the law's stated.
No, cause it, it could. Yeah.
That's fine, I just, I just read it and thought. As a new board member, it's not understanding, like I would think, oh, I'm pretty sure. How like Green and Clark thing, I don't think. Right, we had a word as, I just wanted to clarify, like you weren't thinking murder to figure out.
We're not giving you a cue to warehouse to go. Get a tour.
Yeah, it's, it's not.
Let's go clean it up.
You don't.
Well, Peggy wants it.
Yeah.
You don't want that.
I like cleaning my garage.
Yeah.
Peggy likes it, we're supposed to, and that's uh.
That's fine.
You're just waiting to get in there, you're heading down there today.
Just ask the board.
Those are tasks I have.
That was, that was on your map.
Looks a lot better than it used to.
Okay, can we?
You've experienced them when we've had them on agenda item before, right?
Yeah, I, yeah, but I just wanted to make sure, cause it says we shall determine, but can we just verify that as the law, like that's how the law states it or whatever, so that there's. All of us are on the same page, no ambiguity in the table.
Okay, so can fill us the first reading, but you'd like of these legal references, you'd like to know which one states that?
Yeah, or just make sure that's actually how it's stated, like it's not slight, right, like if that's exactly how the statute states it, I don't think that's the worst thing to do. I just want to make sure that. Yeah, cause I know you guys bring them, that's why he's not asking us to do it.
And I have a couple questions, just transfer it or not, as the wording that, um so staff makes recommendations for the donation.
Yes.
Staff looks and sees where that might be good to donate.
For surplus items, yes.
And, and how do you, um. Okay, so a teacher, say a teacher leaves and takes all her personal things out of the classroom, and what is left? Um how do you determine what is excess?
So depending on what it is exactly, so if it's furniture, there's end of useful life for that versus computers, there's end of useful life. Uh IT has a refresh schedule, usually it's about three year on the computer equipment.
Uh huh. Okay.
So it will surplus, or you know, a lot of the core books. If there's a PC or individual teacher desk, um usually you get about twenty years out of furniture.
Uh huh.
Um so there's standard use of life, and then beyond that, if it's a textbook, nothing will be uh surplus unless it was replaced with new curriculum, so that would come from instructional topics.
What about other items, like I'm, I'm just thinking, um for instance, maybe the year before I retired, I got a, a school paragraph for binoculars for the class set. And the teacher, I left them there because it went along with our curriculum, the teacher who took the spot, didn't know anything about them, just threw them in the trash. And lots of, lots of, lots of books that are permaban class sets, that if the teacher doesn't want, they just throw in the class. So I get calls from um the maintenance workers, parents, why are you throwing away all this stuff, why are you? Um so how, how is that, how, is there a better way to handle that? Because I know other places, even if the teacher here doesn't want them, would.
Can I, can I have some good ideas?
I have the same with some good ideas.
Some place afterwards, in eleven years, I would assume you should.
Well, yeah, if I can respond to that, we had several teachers send some stuff down to the warehouse, mini reviews of the things when they retired, a bunch of other stuff.
Oh. And then I put a call out, and I'll call via email to the principals and said, we have this stuff in the warehouse. Uh huh.
Does anybody want any of it? And they had some staff come down and look at it, a lot of them took things, some of it was no longer useful because it's not the way we're teaching anymore.
Uh huh.
So um that we um actually donated to another, um a boys girls club wanted some of it, so we were able to give them some of the stuff.
Oh, that's right.
But we don't trash anything um that I'm aware of anymore, we, they know they're supposed to send it down, we can, and I'll call out and go through it.
Okay, okay, so there's a new, there's a new regulations in line, if you.
Yeah, we're. We have a process, hopefully they're following the process.
The warehouse is. I said.
Okay.
Okay.
Well, we can't, we can't have, until we have a policy, we can't have administrative regulation that, so there's an administrative regulation that corresponds with this policy.
That's great, I just don't.
So once the policy is adopted, then we will adopt administrative regulation to push up to all the.
You can have, we can have, that makes sense.
We don't have an AR unless we have a PP to attach to it.
That makes perfect sense, I should have never called it that.
So, there's an AR that attaches to it.
That is one you need.
You see, that's great. I'm glad those things somebody's getting to use that are.
Can't say it happens all the time, but we did.
We do our best.
Well, I know one of the things that we did as a group is we partnered with a church that bought a big container to take to Africa and use for children, the build, as building. And put lots and lots of learning material in it, but we kinda did that on our own.
Okay. Word policies, three two nine K business, uh gifts, grants and requests.
Okay, this is okay, President Vickers.
You made that business, okay.
Uh this policy essentially lays out parameters for people accept gifts and donations, specifically calling out that do not think a donation uh has strings attached such as uh ongoing costs associated with program or curriculum. Beyond that, um it's at the board's discretion, on staff's recommendation on what gifts to accept, and it's been, we have already have our skin item of gifts and donations, so this is just a spell, spell out some parameters associated with it.
Uh, go ahead.
Yeah.
So this, um I know before, for instance, uh school power donated a whole big set of. You know, the whole.
People.
People things, keyboards, and a, a person was hired to help teach that after school. But we knew it wouldn't, I mean, it was just kind of experiment, see how this will go. And does that go along with something that could be of value for a few years, but then, I mean, would we not do something like that because we couldn't necessarily sustain it, or we wouldn't wanna try it?
Uh it would depend on the situation, but.
Yeah, I think that's clear with school board, trust, school power trustees, I mean, they're well aware of like, they're just providing something to be tried. There's, it doesn't mean there's any longevity to it, that's clear, and that we can never all of a staff, like, and that might have happened over, you know, for decade or hip of jam, we know better than I would, but. You know, someone always goes, we want, and then we go, okay, that, right, so that's always been clear for the ninety years, eighty years, whatever they've been involved with.
But the staff, the staff never just trained to do this.
Yeah, but after school.
No, did it during the school class.
But they took training?
Uh huh. And they did it for their class, they did it, somebody actually did it for my class. You know, thinking that the um music would help with math and other things.
Yeah, no, I remember the whole, I remember the whole thing, it was on the D C I's, you know, program. But I don't think a list that came to the board, and the board said, yes, we can sustain that, that it was just a trial. Right, trial, like you could fund a trial, we, you know, we can't, there has to be the money on the other side.
We have to ship the money.
That's part of what we talked about with school power, and then we realized this is that little set, districts actually covered.
Someone could have approved that, I mean, I don't, I don't know.
That's what I mean.
Yeah, everyone would have been.
This would have been the year that was, or whatever.
Not necessarily school power.
It was.
No.
It was like two thousand two, it was a long time ago.
And that, that in a lot of the um methods for dealing with that have changed as a result of some of those years. Where the things that were given, and then there were additional costs, or there was then the um, why aren't you sustaining this, or why aren't you doing this?
Okay, that's what I'm saying.
So then the whole method changed, that's why funding is so specific, and so it takes so long to put it together because it's, they want it to last, and we have to know if it's something that we wanna undertake after the first year.
And even teacher grants.
So I believe all that has been changed.
Yeah, and because of um the binoculars and the keyboard.
Teacher grants, teacher grants work in television with, right.
Teacher grants, now work with, instead of outside of the school, which is what used to.
Yeah.
And so because of that, donors, donors were being upset, then it was like, oh, then we should figure out the board.
I, Carol, you have some questions?
I do, I have, um, can you, cause I read through, I saw different places, I've been here, but I did not read um advertising policy or advertising policy, which are first. But can you talk about like banners that hang at school for little bars?
Oh, we had that description on sometimes.
Yeah, the banners that hang in the gym for little bars.
For sponsorship, so that.
Yeah, for sponsorship, and so I'm trying, I'm reading this, I kept on, hmm.
Big one we had one year was over the sandpiper because, you know, Judy, Judy Harold worked for the district, plus their kids were in school here.
It, it's the same.
And so they, they just could not have any reference to it being a bar on the banner, so it just had sandpiper and a little sandpiper bird. It was a very touchy issue, because that is, that is their family business for years, and it's, but we couldn't have anything on the banner that indicated it was, you know, come down for happy hour, I think it's.
Yeah, one of them had the same. Right, I read this, I'm just like, does that mean they can't advertise at all? Because I have seen their advertisement where it does, discuss alcohol, we're done. Give slang to drinking or whatever, um and their comment was, well, we're advertising to parents, not students. It's on students, so crazy.
It's so, it's so precise, no.
Right, and so I, this seems like this would say, no, we can't do that, like this is clear, I just didn't read the advertisement one.
It's very, it's very clear as well, and even specifies the size of the banners for indoor and outdoor in the timeframe, and then the principal has to approve all.
Okay. All, okay, and then the principal, who is the principal, sweet.
So it should be appropriate, the, the principal should, yeah.
No, I'm not gonna cite stuff. Okay, but I thought this was really clear.
Right now, it just seems like we have really heavy real estate ads.
Hmm, I do.
I think that the real estate figured out, this is a great way to get advertising for my business. For the Jogathon, it's like.
And then um for books and materials, like the I am Jazz, the local illustrator, one of them, they made up to the libraries and stuff. That follows this process, there's a process that, an AR in place that's doing then.
This is a new policy, so it's an AR support.
That's what I'm saying, that would be a, yeah, so, or whatever it might be, and we have lots of local artists and um illustrators and books and writers. So if they wanted to donate, now there would be an AR for them.
Yeah, for a process.
Versus the two big, okay, sweet. Um and then on the last paragraph, so superintendent, there's an annual provider report of his gifts, and now we got the one with the artwork. Right, so will we kinda get something like that on an annual basis or whatever those are, if someone donates an amount towards, where's.
Every donation needs to be approved actually.
The rap, page nine.
We bring every donation to you.
Yeah.
For page nine.
It'll all come to you if you're approval, so we can, we'll just, we can summarize that at the end of the year, if you wish.
Well, cause it says, it will, it says it will be somewhere within a year, or it doesn't say when, just annually.
Right, we know, we, yeah, we do it, as we get them.
Oh, we just do it as we get it, so it's long.
But it's always in our agenda, it's all.
Yeah, it's all.
We accept all the donations.
I know, it's just a show annually, that's why it's like, I was like, is there then an inventory annually, that's what I'm trying to figure out.
Yeah. Oh. Oh, I just think each one comes along, that's it, absolutely, I think.
Yeah, let's make it.
So does that even include like, uh like Carol saying, if somebody donates a book?
Yeah, everything we need to accept, yes.
Okay.
So.
That's all on that last.
So do we wanna say that it shall be annually?
Says it's a.
Yeah, that's what I mean.
I think.
But that's just for, for, especially for like our items.
We just have to put it all together in one kind of, here's what we received last year, and that's, that's what this policy will dictate once it's adopted, and so we're not, that's not currently what we're doing, but once the policy is adopted, it's.
So if it's. If it's in. And then.
That's a long answer, okay.
We will, we will do that.
Because we asked about the art, I was just fifteen to whether that's.
Yeah, the art was, you know, that's just simply an insurance, um.
It's a joint, means.
A reminder of kind of costs and, and so forth, but yeah, we bring all of the, those that donate to the trashing funds, obviously, um, that's what most people donate, but we bring that to you for board approval, uh right, every regular meeting that we have those, um.
Yeah, they're in there all part of it.
Yeah, so we'll, we'll just have to, it is, is at some point provide an annual, here's all the, good, so we receive, so we'll take all of those.
Yeah, yeah, they're in there. And just put it together, okay.
Remember, for fiscal year, for fiscal year.
For fiscal year, okay, so that's fine, okay, just two more questions, um, one is, um, when they get on all of our old stuff like the art, that costs money and stuff, that maybe wasn't built into that, is there something in this policy that is addressing that, cause I didn't see anything about getting old, this is all about moving going forward?
I mean, you want inventory of that for that.
No, we just inventory of it, I'm not kind of like, if, if there's stuff you found, I don't know, is there anything besides art, should they have old?
No.
Yeah, okay, okay, so never mind, and then um on the appreciation. Uh for the last one, it's a, it's a pretty broad thing the board can do for appreciation, which I had no idea.
We can change that.
Okay.
So it's, it's not required by, I don't need the codes.
And that's what I was gonna say, so is this in the new law or code that says we can appreciate in any of these ways?
No.
Is this what CSBA recommended for appreciation? Um.
I would, I would stop at um letters of recognition or board restations, and just take all the rest out.
Yeah, because.
Atlantic, the clouds.
Yeah.
Remember the buildings.
Yeah, what, were you just talking about?
On the appreciation, on H P eleven.
On the Patreon.
Okay.
So or board resolution, letter of recognition or board resolution, and take out plaques, and. A member, it could be a decision made to do that, but.
Yeah, members, there is a decision made to do that, but when you have.
But we don't need to lay it out like that. Cause that's within our right, but I, I.
Got it.
Why are you just?
More often than people like to ask me how much my do I have to give for, doesn't it name a building?
We're not doing that.
And I said, I asked Ford to my friend, I said, right, and it stopped the conversation.
Well, they, they basically, they have to be deceased by our, by our policy on that.
A lot. Yeah, that's right, this is what.
And that's our policy, that's a big gift, yeah.
Well, that's what, yeah.
If you delete just the highlighted part though, it, the suggestion is you have limited yourself to letters of recognition and board resolutions, so just delete the, so you might delete the whole sentence if you uh.
I would agree with that.
So that, that's.
How about we just show appreciation for the nation?
We want to show appreciation for the nation.
That's better, then we should do it with proper, so we can.
Ding appropriate, ding appropriate, yeah, and then we can discuss as a board.
Yeah. Yeah.
I'm just thinking of a lot of times looking at this with trees, gardens and mansions, I mean, we've had real hassles over those things.
I like that. Oh, I saw. Mm-hmm.
Particularly when we have done trees and, and plaques for students who are deceased, and then we come ten years later and somebody moves that, so should I just, should I take that out, Janine?
Well, then tree down.
That completely.
No, I like that, cause it, cause we, right, cause it applies to that, I, I just think, I like that, yeah.
I agree.
Um I, I wondered about the sponsorship agreement, should be in writing, it shall be approved by superintendent or designate. Um if we're going for a sponsorship, why wouldn't that have board approval?
It's a corporate sponsorship, it refers to corporate, so.
Well, the question is to, is it the intent, do you want us to bring all sponsorships to the board, or approval for all the athletic sponsorships and all the.
No.
See, I like the, like the trophy need, have the ASIC signs all over the place, cause they got that as a sponsor, but I, I'm, that didn't come to us, Lance handles that, along with the. Co type put that event on, I mean, it was.
Seems like it's a school side issue, in my opinion.
Yeah, yeah.
The leader of the school.
I'm trying to imagine if you have multiple high schools, like what would that be like, instead of we, the ones, and right, and try to think about the policy that way. And, yeah.
And then for the online fundraising, I know many teachers should use crowdsourced to get funding for their classroom, is this, they can still do that, but they need to get permission, or how does that work?
There would definitely be.
I think we tried to clean that up a little bit with some of the issues of years ago, teachers raising money to things that were really affiliated with like their personal church. And it was like, then you get into that area where they're, those students are going home and asking their parents to get involved in this donation for something that really was not the.
They work. Yeah, we, we work really closely with websites to clean up their fundraising, because we don't wanna prevent them from fundraising, but it is, can be an audit issue, if it gets out of control of them.
Okay.
Mm-hmm.
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm.
Well, I like the fact that in the approval that all the funds are the district funds, and there's equitable, equitable being in it, not, that's just.
There's a whole new set of rules once we take that money.
I love, I love that.
Very, when it does say superintendent, as you can, I'm assuming that we go first and decide, that's more.
Yes, usually we'll, we'll work with them.
And when we put, this is a new policy, right?
Yes.
So when we put this as an AR, then we'll be informing teachers that they need to go through the process, they don't just.
Yeah, and it gives the principal the tool to say, here's the process.
And it's just the one starting to, okay.
And then how does the equitable part work?
In terms of.
In terms of if the teacher does fundraising, that's approved by the principal, fundraising for a class project, do they then have to share it with all the other classes, and how does that?
Usually it's for a specific project, but um, we haven't had a lot of instances of that, more so it's been fundraising for a charity.
Right.
But like those for garden.
Uh huh.
In which case we would not accept those funds, because once we accept those funds, we can't give that money out to charity, because it would be.
Do you see what you do in line where we saw the list of things a while back, so like with the sea lions, I mean, we had a list of things that were.
It's a school connected organization, so you have a policy on that, so that, but that refers specifically to, uh as Jeff was referring, there's a teacher that fundraises for something that is specific to, to donate. Uh whether it's to bring animals to whoever, um those, that fund, funding cannot come into the district accounts because, uh we cannot then in turn donate it. So we've, or have created this system that the funds will not end up on our books, but we have a, a better system for that, so that teachers can accept money. Will then process it accordingly with our policy and the law, uh we don't want teachers taking cash, putting it in their accounts, writing checks.
Right, right.
Uh that's highly, that's completely illegal uh for teachers to do that, um and saying that we don't have a policy around that, we do a very specific policy around that, um that we have shared out, so.
Yeah.
I think for the, for that, that's a different conversation, because this is specific to money coming in as a donation to the district, which then passes into the district's accounts in some way, shape or form, it may go into the athletics accounts.
Okay.
Um it may go into, you know, a different kind of funding, or maybe on, uh on behalf of, so for like the Jogathon, for example, those sponsorships are going to P T A. We simply are hosting for a very limited window of time that the banners for that, so it's leading up to the event, and they are removed shortly after the events. Uh this is kind of what we've been doing now, which has been good, um in perpetuity.
Right, right.
Which was kind of the case until we got that policy, you know, dialed in, so.
In specific to your question, do, um, are teachers haven't necessarily been fundraising for projects, you use school power mostly. A lot of them don't spend their school power designations, um in which case it moves over to the principal's discretionary and similar, they can help facilitate the use of that fund. So there's the applicable, thank you for that.
And. Okay. And then does this affect the BP three two five? I don't need to know now, I just kinda like before we, for just such a thing that this policy changes, cause it references that policy within it on page ten.
Uh our policy?
Well, it's like for. Yeah.
No, it's just, our policy is, is really, it's more recent years, adopted in twenty seventeen.
No.
It doesn't. Right.
Uh it doesn't change, all it does is refer to that as well as to our AR, um because there's that freedom of speech with a limited public forum, and then it clearly lines up what kinds of sponsorships are allowed, as long as they are within the vision, mission of the school. Um however, we clearly do not allow um sponsorships that promote the sale of, of materials that are legal or inconsistent with objectives.
Right.
Materials that are patents for tobacco, intoxicants, non nutritious foods, beverages, movies, or products unsuitable for children, so that is our, that's the board adopted policy that says, if there's something incorrect, then.
Okay, and I mentioned a little bit before I came in, but I thought, I'm just.
Yeah, and there's an AR attached to that, that we share with staff, so.
Okay, so then AR already developed this.
Awesome. Are individual students allowed to fundraise for something they're interested in?
No. And this isn't, this is.
I know, this isn't about this, but it's another question.
They can't just go on a campus and fundraise, they have, there's laws around that as well, soliciting funds on campus.
So what does. Because I know a lot of kids will say, hey, I'll sponsor you for five cents a lap, you'll sponsor me for five cents a lap, that kind of thing.
Well, yeah, I mean, at, at a normal major school level, I'm not sure, to, to what degree, but at the secondary level, you couldn't just walk on a campus and start soliciting funds from kids.
Jog, jog. Yeah, that's okay. Okay, okay. Now, if the kids were going on a trip, like um then, or, I mean, or, right, where the whole group is going, and somebody, they needed to fundraise?
Just don't, district sponsor activity.
If they did it on, and they would just follow this policy, is that kind of what that means?
They're supposed to, they, they continue that sending them, so us, it could be a person who's in charge, the coach, along with their bridge organization, you can follow the program.
Right. Follow that, once this is in place, which is helps you to all the place.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, I'm, I'm there with you, cause I thought school power is, and this is this, but there are little sections where.
It's rough, yes.
It's, you don't have anything behind you, but you need to enforce, okay, awesome. Okay, ready for the next one, and which one is next, cause.
Let's do forty one fifty four, cause it's in your packet.
Right, helper, right, it's in.
Yes, so this replaces um a couple of existing board policies, four two O eight and four four O five. Um so it aligns the, the numbering systems, uh this um board policy pertains to all employees, qualified, certified and management. And it just outlines our um requirements to provide health and welfare benefits, as specified in effective bargaining agreement, it does state that then certified management, um administrative and supervisory employees, not in the bargaining units, receive the same benefits as the other groups.
Cause you're really old.
Yes, they were.
You're totally right.
Yeah.
Yes.
Oh, but that's not who's in the bargaining units, like that's why I was like, it's not in the bargaining units, but now I get it, okay, so you're calling out the group and then the unrepresented, okay, okay.
Any underrepresented.
Um and then in the one, two, three, four, the um fourth paragraph, that says pays at least sixty percent of medical expenses covered under terms of plan. Is that like in law, is that in the contract?
That's in the Affordable Care Act.
It's important. Okay, okay, um and then um when I read with the next paragraph, with respect to eligibility for spending, the district shall not discriminate, they were employees. Uh we're among the highest grade by percent, I don't know if that's in law, not in law, but thinking very much.
I believe it is in the law.
Cause what it's a, is it, is it a great way to have equivalency, right, over the city authority, so it's, I didn't realize it was a law, I didn't know. Okay, thank you. Um and then um the continuing to be covered, I'm confused by what all that meant, because it's kinda like retirees, certificate employees and others, which does that mean everyone?
So this is Cobra essentially, so if somebody loses coverage, yeah.
Uh, okay, um, okay. And then thank you so much for all of the legal reference, including cases and everything else, the only legal references I did not see in this new policy that were in the other policies. And it could be because of the change in marriage versus just domestic partners, and so it might not need to be covered, but if it does before the first reading, if you can go back, but it's family code two nine eight. Two nine eight point five, two nine nine, two nine point five and two nine nine six are not actually covered in here, but were covered in the other ones. And I read the three hundred, it wasn't covered on when this was first written, so I'm not sure three hundred trumps that, or we don't talk about those because of the search, your state doesn't have something to do with us? I don't know, and I didn't need to know now, I just kinda meant, at least when you're looking at it, like it it needed to reference, so it was more than law.
The student.
I I didn't see that it did, I just.
Not an expert in family code, I'd have to look that up.
Okay, and that's why I thought, and so the inventions, two nine seven point two nine seven five, which is the rights to register? And that would be something like I could see that you want to express, like they have to, they have the right to do that, the rest of it will seem like what the state needed to do and not what the district had in your business then? Right, we don't talk about others who's married and think they're licensed or divorced, right, it's all in the detail, I'm like, maybe it was removed because it was not in the purview of senior resources anymore, I don't know.
Maybe the law's.
Yes, it's been, it's been our practice for a long time.
Yeah.
Even prior to, yeah, those things changing.
Right, that's. And all that's still there for this, because you don't have to get married, you can just, you can have a partnership, right, you have the marriage, right, and so that, the rest of that goes into all that law, I just say no, why doesn't it?
Yes.
Don't know that, okay.
You guys, I missed on the last one, you bring it forward as a first reading, so um gives grants and requests, so please bring that forward as a two.
Oh, yes.
And then on this, are there more questions on this, health and welfare benefits?
Thank you.
Bring it forward as a first reading. So now we should go to um four one five seven, what you called it, stat, employee safety.
Yes, thank you, uh so this also replaces three other um board policies, four two oh nine, four zero one one and four zero one two. Um and combines all of this um into one policy.
Any questions on this?
Um, how is mold covered? Um, unsafe.
We have procedures for that, that we work through the facilities department. There have been times when employees have alleged that, you know, there's mold in this area, we've brought in a company to complete testing to verify. And then, you know, there they would be covered under workers' comp if some public issue or.
We we intentionally bring that third party company to test in front of the employees, cause oftentimes are, it's better for them here with the third party.
No, didn't. Okay. Right.
And what's interesting is a lot of times, like they'll say it smells mold, but mold doesn't have to smell, so oft oftentimes it's just something with maybe it's a little musty.
Right.
But we always quickly address that sort of way to our employee, so.
Mm hmm. And would that be under this employee safety?
Yeah, yeah, yes.
Well, it would be under multiple policies, because it wouldn't just affect employees, it would likely affect.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
Um and it's kind of deans that some things are said are unhealthy, cause it says, till with no employee shall be required or permitted to be in a place of informal, which is kind of say them unhealthy. Like who, it's like a teacher, uh you know, says smelling you or whatever, but it just depends on the situation.
Several, yeah, we have our annual facility inspection tool that we do for our master plan that's required, uh but then there's the, if you get a mold claim, you're gonna address that right away, so it's not gonna wait for that inspection, so.
So where where like. Okay. And then um and then the next paragraph where it says that last sentence was immediately employees unable to correct and have safe condition, cause I do love the fact that says every employee at the top is responsible for safety, like that's awesome. It's very teacher centered, but it says that he or she shall immediately report the problem to the superintendent designated. And so let's say it's a teacher reports, the principal. But then in the AR where you discuss like when they'll get the information to you, cause I think it'd be that they need to, it's somewhere has to get to you, correct, or yes, or you, or it has to get to someone, isn't it?
Yes, most of it. Most of me, and but our employees do not have a lot of time to give directly to me right away.
Okay, do you need anything around that, those, those.
So.
We we certainly spell it out in the process of AR, but um for the most part, I think our employees are really good about this actually.
We still have that.
Do they have a chain in the AR and do they go to the principal first?
Typically, they do, they go to the principal, um and then the principals are always pretty good about giving that straight away.
Okay. And I have one more.
So it's, at this point, will we have those books?
Yes, I think, well, we have a place books relatively right now.
Um, my one last question around the last paragraph, no employee shall be discharged or discriminated against. And we don't discharge or discriminate against anyone committed in complaints or instituted procedures or. Like in general, we we don't do that, so it.
No, we're doing it against the law.
We don't. Right, and so that stated, I just felt like is it boldly stated the same way in other policies that were, or as we moved and says, as we move forward, that we make sure we boldly stated, we're in bold state here.
It's it's in the call of our complaint policies, the discrimination.
The same, it says over and out.
Retaliation, it's the wording's not identical to this, this I think is probably verbatim out of the Labor Code.
Right, when he stated there, okay.
Yeah, and in every Labor Code, Government Code, Ed Code, prohibition on retaliation, but the kind of the the structure of one of those is, the first one is is protected activity. Not every complaint would be considered protected activity under the law. I mean, for example, I think a teacher um distributing emails to a bunch of people criticizing a parent wouldn't be protected, legally protected activity, so.
Okay.
Disciplining that teacher wouldn't be retaliation, so I think you do need the uh the reference to specific, it is protected activity for an employee to say, I think I'm in unsafe working conditions based on this. So that's why you uh, why you have that specific.
I I love that it's there, I just I just wanted to, I would either we do not allow for retaliation, that is wrong, but we stand up to anything, you know, hit around that. And um it's a difference between I didn't like it, or I should have been protected, or I was right, or now I'm being disciplined, well, it wasn't legal in the first place for you to do what you're doing, that's a different story.
Right.
I just wanna make sure that like as we look forward in policies, that we just, I love it's so bold, and I just wanna make sure that we remain bold, um we don't tolerate retaliation or violating the law. And thank you once again for all of the legal references and and all these court cases and all those.
Any other questions on this? Can bring it for first reading? Okay, forty one fifty one, and the other is on salary compensation.
So uh this replaces uh forty four oh three and forty four oh four.
Sure. What happened to thirty two?
We're just taking them in order of the packet, we're what we're getting.
Okay. Yeah, they gave them packet.
They were, that was really different.
Big courage, one number painting.
Right.
Of course, you can maintain mine.
It's much more slash track.
In the packet, they're in numerical order, and in the summary, they were switched.
It's Romeo.
Yeah, so employee compensation.
I'm like, oh, I'm just.
That's why I took it, that's why I took it apart, because I know you take it apart, not work in line, so that I can just put it. Okay, so I, so are we a merit system, merit system?
No.
Okay.
We're not.
That explains a lot of these policies, cause it it, we provide re- legal reference for merit policy and for non merit policy, so but I looked at other districts where they just left the merit policy policy. They didn't talk about those laws in their references.
I uh I I thought of the same thing, you're not a merit district, um but there are.
There's a crossover.
Cross references, there there are a lot of provisions, like forty five one one three, it's in the uh. When you looked at earlier on on probationary status, uh forty five one one three has a a specific reference that.
Yes, it was in there, yes. It does.
This applies to districts incorporating merit system, but then there are things like classified layoffs, those statutes are actually in the merit system. Uh rules and there and there's a cross reference too, so.
So when I'm talking about six, like I was on Irvine, and Irvine actually has, you know, if I classify, if I forget, right, they break theirs out, and so it should under classified, but it's kind of under other than that, like that's probably why. I think really why we were mentioning merit, I would.
It's it's in the, right, the policy applies to, I think, the year, so the word is.
Makes sense. Okay. And where that language applies to be here, yes, that addresses it, okay. Um, so hang on, I'm just gonna pause this, I'll pause this, I'll insert that, um. Oh, and so the one, two, three, the third paragraph, the last sentence, certified employees shall not be placed in different classifications on the schedule, nor pay different salaries solely on the basis of grade levels at which they teach. Must even as in the law?
It's.
Or the fourth paragraph?
Not as marked, but it's either law or it's a case.
Or a case or something, um.
Yeah, I don't see any cases referenced.
Yeah, that's uh one of the legal references is four five zero two eight of the education code. Which the general rule is teachers have to be placed on a salary schedule based on a uniform allowance for years of training and years of experience. That's the step and column, the years of training is the column, the years of experience is the step.
Okay. Okay.
And so generally, um unless something is negotiated otherwise, a first grade teacher and a high school teacher with the same training and experience have to be on the same sal- salary schedule, and that's what that's uh referring to.
And is that the same for subject matters, which comes up when we're trying to negotiate?
Well, it's it's based on what's negotiated, so for example, we have a teacher salary schedule that applies to all teachers and speech pathologists, we have an athletic director salary schedule, we have a counseling salary schedule.
Okay. That's right, okay.
So essentially, they're based on on the same calculation, but they work different days and have different work years or different workdays, so.
That's. That's why.
That's why.
Okay.
But if we were to hire a school nurse, high school and a school nurse, you know, school readiness, they're on the same salary, so.
Almost it, doesn't matter where, location they're at.
So to negotiate in other districts, if they'd want to, for instance, pay a special education teacher more because they're.
Over deployed. Right.
Of a male teacher.
Yes, great, yes.
The the law didn't used to allow that, but the uh um, what it says, unless the board and employee organization negotiate a mutually agreeable um salary schedule based on different criteria. That was added to forty five zero two two eight, probably ten or fifteen years ago, but so now you can negotiate differential salary schedule for hard to fill positions or things like that, but it's rare, but it's it's very rare.
Yeah.
That's what I was thinking about, is how that maps out something, you're sign, whatever.
And is a bonus part of that, like when teachers get a bonus, you're signing, that's part of that negotiation?
Yeah, there there's a question legally whether a signing bonus has to be negotiated, because you're technically paying it before they're employed.
Right.
Um and so that sometimes there's disputes in districts that won't do that.
Okay.
Uh huh. Mm hmm.
But there's no case that's a part of that, one of the others, or just total.
No, it's still unsettled.
The only, the only other. The only other comment I have is around legal reference, there's two legal references from other ones, this is that weren't in here, which is Ed Code four five one two seven, which is about work week.
Yes.
And Labor Code five ten covers work week as well, but uh four five one two seven is more current than Labor Code five ten, which is mentioned in this policy.
That's not the latest.
Four five one two seven is on board policy four four oh three. Okay, all right, let me take a slide. And these might be really Mark questions, that's been, right, I don't know his way to, but that's what work week is, similar, it had a couple things about merit pay that was different, that's why I asked.
Not American district.
I know we're not, but but when Mark talked about the crossover in classified information, that could be why that. Four five one two seven was on this other board policy. No, it's on the deleted.
Some of the lead ones.
They're on the deleted one.
Oh, okay, okay.
Here, you can have one. The two are highlighted, and I and I don't really answer today, I just feel like if they should be, if it's helpful to have them there, when we go back to negotiate or talk about something like in AR and some.
Uh this is about compensation, it looks like four five one two seven is more about the work week, like hours would probably fit more, it it's actually referenced, I think, there's overtime.
But yeah, Labor Code five ten overtime compensation like for work day is also on current schedule, so that's that's the only reason, I'm like, I don't know if it's helpful.
Yeah, that is it there, so.
It talks about merit pay, so that's what made me think, or or not merit pay, but merit.
Merit districts.
Which has to be classified, which is, has to be classified, so that's why I didn't know if you needed to mention it or not, and then also policy four five three oh nine, which is that frame stating, I'm still confused by the. Um board. Cause at least if the expert has, I mean, I don't know.
That's on forty four oh four.
Yeah, four five three oh nine is one of the cross referenced, that's a merit provision, but it's, but it relates to layoffs.
That's a merit.
For classified, right?
Yes.
Yeah, see, that's why I was just. I would say Irvine was a good example, except Irvine talked all about superintendent in all of this as well, and so it wasn't, but, cause I was trying to figure what merit pay meant in this area.
Merit system.
Oh.
It's not merit pay.
Yeah, it's merit system.
It's it's more of a.
It's it's not saying merit system.
Yeah, it's more of a structure like a civil service.
Personnel commission.
Person, there's a personnel commission, a separate free person commission that hears discipline, that does reclassifications, and then there's much more in a merit district.
Yeah.
You might uh uh detect my preference for non merit.
Have they worked in both?
But there there are um uh, there's a lot of structure where there are promotional exams, you're not allowed to hire, there there's an eligibility list and you have to pick from um certain, you know, it's uh. I think usually the top three on an eligibility list, and then there's often in a merit district, there's a lot of ambiguity on the interplay between collective bargaining, which is the district negotiating with the union. And personnel commission and the things that they do and what has to be negotiated and what the personnel commission has the authority to do and not to do, and so it's it's a lot.
It's pretty much more.
More straightforward when it's just the district and the the, and in in this case, the SCA, the negotiated agreement and um the non merit.
Than having that, just.
Yeah.
And it seemed complicated, I just, the I, that's why I was just confused, I was like, I don't think we do that, but so much legal reference to.
Any questions, any more questions on name play compensation? Bring it forward for a reading. Forty two sixteen, the labor pay improvement status.
So this is a new policy, we can have it before, it pertains solely to classified employees, um and it essentially just defines the um probation period, probationary period, which we've defined it here consistently with our contract.
Okay, I have another merit pay question, so we have not been adopted article six, right? Whatever that is that talks about in this policy, cause I went through the right office, Ed Code, article six of what? I don't know in this Ed Code, I think that's part of merit pay, it's article six?
Merit, merit system.
System, system, I can say anything, system, merit system is article six, okay, okay. Well, that's why some of those legal references were missing, is because they were justified.
They're just.
Yeah, and so I went to different districts to try to understand what merit system was, right, that's right, um the only thing, the only thing, I don't, is nine months probationary, is that what is in our contract?
That's our system of our contract.
Okay, cause I saw lots of various ways.
Yes.
But.
The Ed Code says no longer than a year, so six months. The Ed Code says no longer than a year, so six months to a year is the.
Ours used to be six months, I mean, uh several year, I think even before I got here, it's changed to to nine months.
Is it worth the six months, plus it could be superintendented in the additional six months, there's all kinds of different language, but most of them working towards the year. Or or adding other stuff like drug testing and other, it was interesting what they were adding in if they're going to be a shorter one, so. But they, I think they.
Let's see.
Uh uh Fullerton, I think, was, yeah, because I was trying to, I was trying to read merit systems, I kept going out there to look at.
Oh, okay, you're looking at.
So they, three number plate references, right, so I kept going to look at other districts to try to.
Okay.
Um, there was one in the very last um paragraph, the second last paragraph, after uh it's a classification from which they were promoted. On Fullerton, Irvine, and Carmel or Palatora, they did have only if the position still exists.
They've probably negotiated that.
Like, I was like, how many contracts versus how many is the. Okay.
Yeah, the Ed Code says that.
That could.
But that's what's in our contract.
Yes.
Okay, okay, I thought that was a. Do we ever run into that situation?
We've had a situation where we've run into this.
Would that be a language change? Everything talk about in here.
Sure. That would fall under negotiations.
Any other questions on this probationary permanent status, bring forward the first reading.
And and I would add, just for clarification, two of those. If the position still exists, it's different than if the position is vacant. If the position still exists, um but somebody is sitting in the is in that position, then that person would need to be laid off so that the person could return.
Right. For that. So it'll only be like, they got rid of that position altogether, right?
Yeah, and and when that's negotiated, it's because, well, we um basically already did a kind of a sort of layoff of that position.
And it continues that.
Somebody got promoted and we eliminated the position, so there's nowhere for that person to go back to.
Okay. I think it did meet the probationary requirements.
Yeah.
Okay. I am grateful for your attention. You know what the content. Is it the explanation?
We don't have a non-contract.
Do you need that? That would be a complication of this.
Because of the regulation.
Yeah, okay, um, so we move on to five one one three, absences and excuses, and this will replace.
This is.
This is you, yeah, you voice.
Thank you, President Bickers, alright, so there was a new law, A B twenty two eighty nine, which addressed pregnant and parenting students. In that law, it amended the definition of immediate family, specifically instead of mother, father, it's parent guardian. So that tipped off the update of this of this particular A R.
Which one?
We're on five one one three. Yes, five one one three, yes, yes, I know, but the definition of for parenting and uh pregnant pupils tipped off the A R updating on this. So I went back and checked the B P that had also been updated, so I'm kind of describing the story of how, why I bring this forward.
Okay.
Our previous work policy for five zero zero eight did address um student absences for religious purposes. However, I feel that this piece that I thought to recommend, that this particular sentence in red, um allow us to delete two thousand, uh five thousand eight. This particular uh five one one three was adopted in two thousand seventeen, but it did not have the red sentence. And we will, of course, amend our A R to.
Oh, into the new one, yeah. This maybe still happening. Yes.
I'm not sure.
I'm not sure, Mark has a comment that you're not.
So we adopted this policy in November twenty seventeen.
We did.
But the one that is, that for deletion, we'd already deleted it then.
No.
No, we had still had another, oh, we had as a as a same, as a specific one, just for religious purposes.
We still. Correct.
Because I thought it was interesting that it seemed like it was a competition in that, with the four four hours employment, four days.
Hmm, yeah, I know.
Okay, so we've kept this on the books, alright.
We have.
Any questions on this policy? Bring forward the first reading.
Oh, wait, we have one question, the last thing, this isn't so confusing, but what is it, what does it mean that last paragraph? The board shall by resolution enter into minutes approved reasonable methods that may be used to verify student absence on this quarantine, quarantine. Like what, what are we doing? What are you doing, Jason? What is the board doing that?
So this might be an extreme circumstance, for example, when I was principal, so I flew with through my school, there was a discussion for classrooms or under quarantine by the county, so it talked, I would, I would propose, like in my experience, I propose, there was a discussion about, do we need to bring this forward?
Like a nasal.
Does the board need to act on this?
Okay.
Since it was such a drastic uh event that was happening in my particular school set at the time, that that's what comes to mind.
On that, okay.
But I think, Mark, is it, is it something similar to that situation?
Like if there was a measles outbreak or something?
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay, that's what that, okay.
We did also, we covered, I I know I had a student traveled in China and came back, was healthy, but other parents did not want him in class because of the Chinese birth, and so the principal told him he could not come to class, is that?
Well, we typically don't quarantine students unless we have working with our county health department, so they're the ones that traditionally take over any sort of a quarantine situation, so. Obviously, this is a new um uh call support, so provide some clarity around process. Um, so, you know, we we have measles outbreak recently, that was, we think, a lot of the lead had been taken by the agency because they're the ones that are actually the facilitators of that, we would not keep a student out of school, um unless we had.
So this would give the principal some, something to go by to say to the other parents, I can't keep him out if he's.
Unless it's good. That there's no specific, you know, yeah, there's no health.
It was just that he'd been placed where.
No, there's no health requirement unless, again, you receive information from the health department, that would lead us to a different reason.
But then he was also, I, the parent asked for work then, and I was told if I took work to him, I wouldn't be allowed to teach the class.
No, I can't, I can't speak to this situation, but.
Because I would pay it back.
Right, we can't assess the situation, but. But but on this, what are we asking, that the board shall by resolution, so if, so if something happened, like a measles outbreak, then the board could say you could, all those kids could then be verified as they were absent?
But you, your method, it's the method by which you're excusing, so you could say simply, you know, we're not going to require parents to provide a note because we know that the health department is excluding them from school, so.
That's what that is a case of.
Okay, I was looking for the examples, so I would say for.
So, but. But we, we didn't do that, that's the most recent one, the parents just simply called, and they, we knew they were excluded. The parents let us know, we knew how long they were going to be out, and they worked with them, and I just worked while they were out, so that they didn't fall behind.
Okay.
So, you know, they just couldn't come to school because the healthcare agency, it's said as such, so.
Okay.
Could in that resolution, like if, I don't know if kids still, schools, teachers, kids still work towards like a perfect attendance or not, I don't know where that's going with.
No.
That you could, the board couldn't say, it doesn't go against our perfect attendance or something?
That's more. No, I mean, they don't do perfect attendance, because that's, it's very.
That's why we have.
I, I know, just, I was trying to think, I was trying to think, I was trying to think, things that the board would be doing in that resolution, okay.
We don't do that.
No.
No. It's simply to say, it, the resolution is simply, here's how we will allow you to verify the student absence, because by law, we have to have verification of student absences, so that when making our audit, we have that in writing, so whether it's through some kind of paper or whether the board says we simply are going to allow the healthcare agency to provide us a list, and we will consider that as confirmation that these students are excluded from school. But it it's really around the method by which the uh verification of the absence, whether you're quarantined or illness, it's it's very specific.
Right, that's a.
Quarantined or illness, and that's specific to the reasoning behind.
I just thought B was my brother.
Kids being excluded for uh chemical diseases, you know.
Right. Okay.
So lice is quarantined.
Well, the the rules have changed related to lice, so, yeah.
Really? Okay.
Okay, that is very helpful, sorry, I get the leads to get there, I just couldn't understand what you were.
Yeah, it's, it really, it's technically.
You're asking, it was asking of us, the policy is asking of us.
Right.
Just had a quick question with what we're adding to this policy, and based on our comment, we had a few meetings, wrote for the fault. Then our A R will make it clear to staff that there's not anything that penalizes a student if they're not ordered, just pays.
Correct, correct, we're not calling specifically that you can't assign work on certain holidays, however, we did, we are setting out a best practice that, you know,
No, I'm just saying. Okay.
One, we will let them know of the high holidays and other holidays uh that they should be aware of, and know that they will have students missing, and if at all possible, try to refrain from scheduling a test, you know, assigning a project or whatever it might be, um but yes, so that's part of the ownership regulations.
But it still ties in with the personal choice on the parent, family part, okay. Thank you, and bring it forward the first reading, so.
Okay. Um, fifty one twenty seven, graduation ceremonies and activities. Thank you, so A B uh twelve forty eight um was a resolution in September two thousand eighteen. It asks districts to update their um ceremony work policy with uh with regard to tribal or religious or cultural regalia, as well as it out in the um, in the particular statute, uh talks about adornment and cultural, and it's more in addition to, not in replacement of, but we call that small change out under conduct a graduation ceremony as recommended unless the Ed Code.
Yep, can I access, just, could I three five one eight, three point one?
Yes, that's what she's relatively did now.
I know, but I couldn't find, I just looked up Ed Code, but I don't know on here.
So it called, um, so I can read directly, I can read it for you. Okay, so it says, if people make wear a traditional tribal regalia or recognized objects of religious or cultural significance as adornment at school graduation ceremonies, nothing in this section though shall be construed to limit a local education agency's discretion and authority to prohibit an item that may cause a substantial disruption on material interference with the ceremony. So it's on top of.
And that's, so like if you're military, like you can wear, they're already on, they can wear instead, right, so this is just on top of.
That's.
That's, that's.
Oh, yeah, yeah, that's okay, but that's why it's distinguishing the difference.
Yeah.
Okay. Yes. Any other questions on this sentence, bring forward the first reading, okay. Fifty one, forty one, clock fifty two, this is the side conviction.
Yes, so this is a recent update, this should look familiar to you, we brought this back, we brought this forward in two thousand seventeen.
Hmm.
There's this right language change, that's a very nice one, proactive in the first paragraph, it lines out in uh to attempt, but changes in an effort to reduce, so it's really proactive language, and then finally, the near the bottom, not only shall we bring this forward for review every fifth year, um but it also talks about high risk students. Okay, alright, thank you.
Why, why do we list all these things and not just leave it at high risk?
This was recommended from Gammet, we like this because it called out students that were at high risk to call them to attention. And I hope you know, as our data somewhat reflects this, so I felt that it was reinforcing of our need to be mindful of their risk.
Well, that, making high risk given different planes in that, so lead to suicide litigation, right, so.
Yes.
And uh where do you, by suicide actually had terminology that was, like when you have one suicide in one place, it's deemed on the others and stuff like that, that's really interesting.
Yes.
Not just the prevent of someone experiencing that, your siblings, the family, but you have another thing.
Yes.
So, and then um, Mark, my husband didn't want me to tell you that prevention is a terrible, lesserized word in the Latin root. But psychologists like to use it, but he's forgiven it for that.
Where is it?
Oh, prevention is not the same as prevention, intervention is a word on the psychology side, but not the legal side, and.
Because it's the first, first paragraph, last word.
He just. Yeah, he just wanted me to share with Mark, because I had to ask him like ten times how that word is formed and how you pronounce it in our nails. And so then he had, it became funny, but he wanted me to share just those words with Mark to make Mark smile a lot, and then.
It's basically.
I I got, I I did, I I've got preen post.
It's not, it's not a lazy word.
The right word.
I got it.
It's actually like what I've been, you know.
But in the, in suicide prevention, it has a very specific meaning, kind of the dormitory thing, where you then, it has all this stuff that incorporates, but as a legal word or as a root or a language, um the Latin root, it is not, it does not flow, so he wanted me to pass.
I think the identification is looking, probably what we call.
Yes, I can't talk about words, words are very.
Read by suicide, that's really concerning, what they're saying, and so that's some of those cases where there's been other student suicides after students.
Yeah, it's, it's so common.
And also, just so you're aware, we will have on our I D cards going, next year, the, on the back of the I D card, the compartment statewide is now the holiday numbers for suicide prevention, so.
Yes, for our our training, and that we're doing some suicide prevention training for teachers to look at those things. Um, are we also training teachers, I know I wasn't training this, but you weren't here. Um, when students are experiencing grief, bereavement, how do you deal with that?
Yes, so right now, the le- the legislation calls for seventh through twelfth graders to uh have suicide, uh teachers of students and staff. So our training is sixth through twelfth, but what we've noticed in a conversation up until last year is that our elementary teachers want to have awareness as well, so we've really brought the conversation to awareness and prevention. That that's an annual training, a secondary.
I mean, I think it's, I think a lot of teachers don't feel confident when, you know, a child's granddad dies, or they're, you know, I remember whose fathers die, and what is, what should you say, what shouldn't you, what kind of, how are you.
And our sector is so well resourced with yours, with board support, um to make sure that students get support, even if a teacher does not know what to do. But yes, we're also making teachers.
Because, yeah, I went to some training that just gave me some exact things to look at and say, I think Chad wants so much of that training, maybe.
But, but I don't think that's, now that we, I don't believe in speech for all teachers, I don't think that's a teacher's job, because from my experience and having had a child with peregrine, so. I don't think that is the case, I think our teachers are.
I think the teacher is incredibly simple, I mean, I mean, I think we have pretty much the empathy issue with, but I think to me would be more key if the teacher is seeing real distress in that student that they put that on to research. And that they also communicate with the parent that they're seeing back in the classroom, so that they get, so they share that information and contact that the student has.
I don't think they hold on to that or ever, or get stopped by, I think there are some resources for them to reach out, if they themselves don't know.
But I, I, on a simple basis, I mean, over the years with my kids, I saw teachers that, you know, they they did exactly the right thing, just basically it was the empathy, and that was not just people that was pets, because for young children, that's, that's a big deal, so.
Right. Oh, yes, I'm aware of it, yeah.
And I did.
It could be the sale that died on shield, right?
Right, that day. Especially all the.
But you're right.
We go through all the, the things I saw, go through all the things where, you know, so say your pet died and it's old, but you don't say, oh, they're in a better place now, or you know, they're probably not in pain anymore, those are specific things that you shouldn't say, and specific things that are okay, so. So any other kids will see.
Yeah, I was gonna say, kids will see, I don't know if kids see, but hopefully eventually they'll know, but I think there's so much knowledge.
Just, just so we move back, because uh just.
Yeah, we're talking about.
Yeah.
You guys.
We, we're hard on this, suicide prevention.
We're, we're, we're.
We're.
Suicide, I had that there, so just want to make sure we're back to the, this is the.
Well, your question was regarding grief, so.
Right, the training specific to.
But yeah, it's, it's around suicide, yeah.
It's pretty good, it's around suicide.
Um, and then we're gonna be there every five years?
Yes.
I thought five years was a long time.
Yeah, so did I, can we do it sooner? Or you're gonna do it, you're gonna do it as soon as soon as.
If there are changes, it'll come before five years.
Yes.
Any other questions? First reading, okay. Uh, six one four five point two, athletic competition.
Yes, so you adopted this board policy in two thousand fifteen. Um, recent legislation has required districts to update written emergency action plans and sudden cardiac arrest for deep illness. Pam and Lance have worked very closely with Chad uh to update our procedures. I want to call out for you that it is also, uh students are able to participate consistent, consistent with gender identity as well, um which doesn't exactly align to the written emergency action plans and sudden cardiac arrest, but it's in alignment with our other board, board policy changes.
Thank you for being so thorough and catching on to the title of that in. And was it the law change too on racial, just racial, that Masco thinks about, so.
That was our thing, yeah.
The first is on this? With first reading.
Six one four five point six, international exchange.
Oh, where is the, where are those?
They're all.
We're up, but there's one here in the office, there was one before, one, I think there's two, I suppose.
The deeper.
Yeah, I think you're sharing on the, and and those can be used on employees too, or something, but they're not. And and those can be used on employees too or something, but they're not just, so safe, let's make it safe online.
They could be used on.
So this is.
Yeah, they're safer in.
There's a part of me that needs the deep.
Yep, very intuitive. They walk you through the entire process.
They do, they're, it's just, yes.
Yeah, reads off the instructions.
It speaks to you. You have been trained with that, no?
It's really simple.
Yes, it tells you. It tells you, because it tells you if you don't need to do it. It's part of it.
That's awesome.
You hook it up.
You hook it up and then it's, yeah.
Get done this thing. Is that in search training?
I don't know about such.
Mm-hmm.
Thank you, yes, so a little bit of timeline here. So we adopted our board policy fifty forty three in two thousand ten. Gamit's replacement that is current language on here was two thousand four, so we we've we've adjusted our policy to align to Gamit recommendations with C S E A I. Um around best practice. So that's why most of it is lined out, but it does talk about our international student exchange programs and our how we support students.
And can I ask, just in the page forty eight, the first paragraph on that page, kind of talking about funds and stuff, kind of works to. So trying to understand, so the exchange student comes for the whole year and they enroll into school. And they can make something and all of that, like all of everything that they're all supporting on. They pay the.
Actual cost.
The actual cost of being in school there, so whatever it is that we, like like the actual cost that we already have teachers and stuff, so there's no real cost, because they just kind of said they already have it. Or the actual cost of what we assign per student.
Per student.
Okay, and then if one of our students goes overseas, they don't take that money with them from the district to go, and that's all along, or that's in our practice?
No.
I'm sorry, Mark.
No, it's in, it's in law.
That's in law.
I think every every school district calculates a a pursuit cost.
I just wanna make sure about like.
And it's based on your, I think, prior year, probably P two enrollment.
Cost.
So it's a, it's an estimate, but everybody uses the same formula to calculate it.
Okay. Okay, but I was getting like, we're we're community funded, but with a KDA, like you're kind of trade, you're, you know, your kid comes and they get more dollars and so I was like, I kind of. It just in mind.
There's no portability in those.
Thought it was for, I thought it was.
State doesn't write, you actually have been saying here.
I I really, I really, it it I never really thought it through. I just had it up, I was really like, oh, but it worked that way, so I could pay, doesn't the money go with them or something, okay.
I think there's a program specifically.
Okay, so actually programs.
Mm-hmm.
I only do the summer thing for some.
So is this um, do we have students here right now in this four or five?
Um but they have, uh so for example, there's a.
So they pay.
We are not at this time, we're sleeping.
So this change is that.
So uh for example, a company reached out to me recently and Chad said, we're reviewing our policy. Here's the amount that you would have to pay.
That's a company, so.
Uh yes, uh it's invented by this uh organization.
Right.
Um so they're thinking about it, um for example, if that's a change for us.
Right, makes sense.
Makes sense.
Okay.
And the only thing I didn't see um a legal reference on this one versus the other one was um. United States Code Title Eight, one one eight four four in students. And Mark, I don't know if it needs to be there, it doesn't need to be there, but it just wasn't under this legal reference.
Here's the page fifty two.
I'm looking at the old, the old policy, the one being deleted. Yeah, and I just go through to see if all the legal references are the same. If not, I go read them when I have time. I just kind of start around time. So I'm just asking on one, but then I just go back and check.
You're gonna get the old one, so you're gonna.
What was that again, eight U S C?
Uh one one eight four, and it's four in students. And so if it needs to be there, great. And that makes sense, but I have to reach out to me because I did the summer thing, asking all the time about what's. Come, that's the measure.
They wait for the answer. So we bring this to the first reading. Okay, six one four six point four differential graduation policies standards.
Thank you.
New policy for us?
This isn't a policy that President Bickers. Uh so we at this time have a board policy around high school graduation. This is for, this policy would be for students on a path of receiving a certificate of educational completion, so students on a modified program. For a little bit of context, at this time, we have six students in high school.
Thank you.
Questions on this?
Yes, I have a green tab.
That's a green tab, you don't have my green tab over there.
It's also exciting.
So we're going to ask the first reading. Uh now we move to um some board bylaws. Some board just review, uh now to G M zero, that's a board member authority.
I'm sorry, Mark, I'm gonna say your name of law.
Okay. That's easier for.
I know. So the governing board recognizes the board is the unit authority over the district and that the board member has no individual authority. And so my questions are really gonna be around like, what are the legal bases we need to know of the different things that we're reading, cuz I know they're all in there. And I remember going through and looking at this when we first came to the board member and then training, but I kind of thought, well, we're here together, you walked us through, so maybe some of this is where our biggest misunderstandings are. And it'd be really helpful to build like, send us a couple of these policies and really get the understanding of them. You know, board members shall hold the education of students of partisan principles, groups' interests and personal interests. And I know I've heard these, some mentioned Brown Act, some mentioned law, and if you know where they actually fall. Or right where they, what laws are referencing within all the legal references right here.
Yeah, some of these, I'll I'll uh. I'll I'll start with this. Some of these are, some of the provisions in ninety two twenty are based on um.
We're at ninety two hundred, right?
Are you at ninety?
Ninety two hundred, that's right.
Okay, I just wanna make sure.
The are based on um. Provisions of code, um for example, the one in the first paragraph, there's a, there's a provision of that code that says a board acts through a majority vote of its membership. So that kind of frames that, um that's how a board acts is through a majority vote, not through uh individuals. So some of them are code base, some of them are more aspirational. They're they're, this is how we collectively as a board, which is a different thing than the five individuals.
Right.
But collectively as a board, this is how we have decided through um adopting rules for our own governance that we expect one another to. Carry out that role as a board member. So um and then some of them are a mix. I would say the individual members of the board shall not exercising the administrative responsibility with respect to the school stat in the uh. Beginning of the second paragraph. Uh that's both aspirational and I would say it's it's an accurate statement of law also. Being elected to a board of education doesn't give that individual any more authority at a school site or in a district office than any parent or other citizen. They have the same right, but not uh an additional right. So uh that would be an example of um. Of both of it. And I and I'll say, uh after the last meeting, um Jan and I spoke and um. I'm working on a legal opinion to address some of the things that um that are invoked here based on some statements that were made at that at the last board meeting. And and I won't go into detail on that, but that's something that will be um.
So you're gonna provide that vector, okay.
Yeah. Um and I also looked at, I know, uh Dee, you handed out a a list of questions, um and here's where I get to sound like a a lawyer. Um which I know can be frustrating. Um board bylaw, I think the next one you're looking at does have the statement that. Board bylaws, board policies have to be interpreted consistent with law. So you can't take away through a bylaw um rights that an individual board member has. You can't take away from employees' rights that they have through a board policy on personnel or students, so that's that's a a global issue. Um or a a a global proposition, but when you, um and I was thinking of some examples, there's. A reference to that and then there's a series of questions under it. The first question is, can a board member conduct fact finding or investigation um separately and individually? Well, the answer to that is, if the board member is exercising a right that he or she has under the law, then yes, they can. But can a board member in doing that demand information from staff at a school site, for example? No, that a parent doesn't have that right, um uh individual board members don't have that right. Can they share confidential personnel or student information? No, there are legal restrictions on that, so.
Can they access those?
Can they access it?
Right.
Generally, no. Yeah, a uh uh an individual board member using student records, for example. The standard under state and federal law for pupil access to pupil records is a an employee with a reasonable need to know that information in pupil records. Board members would fall into that category. Um so that would be an example. You have uh uh contracts, um your employment contracts for your administrators. They incorporate the rules and regulations of board into the contract. So now you have a contractual obligation vis a vis that employee to comply with these. And that's something that the board has uh bound itself um through a contract. Same thing with a collective bargaining agreement. I was looking, the LaBufo contract has a an article on complaints. So if a board member receives a complaint about an employee and considers that to be significant enough that it needs to be investigated. Then that contract has to be followed, and so that's why you, you know, the these things. Uh endorse the idea that those are taken to either the superintendent or the assistant superintendent for HR for handling those of the people day to day, week to week. Implement the collective bargaining agreement and supervise employees um of the district. So those are some, that's just that first question, so.
Right, that's what I mean, that's.
Um and you go through each one of those questions, the answer is gonna be the lawyer answer. It depends on the specific circumstances. And uh.
Well, and if we're if we're talking about these questions for the school board ones and.
Yes, as a question, it's easier for you.
Yeah, that's what, that's what I just, I just think it clarified this, these questions, right, so that, yeah. That uh I think seven and eight are the areas of greatest misunderstanding.
Well, six is a non is a non-question because all of our votes are reported. Close session votes that are reported out, everyone always knows who votes out, that's in the, that's in the minute.
Correct. Do you have?
You didn't have a copy of this?
Oh, okay.
Yeah, I spent a lot of time looking over that and um.
Well, I know, I thought there's lots of definitions and. You define.
It should have been.
I think there's so much that needs to be defined and what, and examples of what questions are.
An underlying thing to me when I looked at that was that where do we define? We all have the same individual rights, everyone does, but when we join the board, we have, in my, in my view. Responsibility to the organization that rises above that. And so anything that I do, you know, in regards to these questions, I have to ask myself that the question. How how is this supporting the the district? That's the organization I'm responsible to. So I may have, and I, because I find, I I early on learned that as one board member, you know, I I don't have support of two others. The greatest idea in the world that I have isn't gonna fly. And that goes, you know, way back to, you learn that quickly as a board member, that you don't join a board and then get away. So it it really becomes to me the the commitment to the organization and what I might do as an individual, if that's going to damage the organization. So if I say, don't move on, don't move forward, don't go with the majority and move the district forward, in my view, then I'm doing damage to the district. And so that all of the, all of these, as I look at them, except six, which is not um relevant, fit into that category as an over as an overarching thing. And so that's, because as you said, I mean, it could be depends, so depends means where does that responsibility lie? And I get into integrity and ethics and the responsibility, and that's big to me, because the organization is above my individual rights. Yeah, I could I could knock off in every media and say some really outrageous things, because people over the years have said to me, I don't know how you do it. I don't know how you listen to people come in and re-rate and demean, and you don't say anything. I said, that's that's the responsibility that I have. Because it would just make it worse and it isn't, it is appropriate, it's in place for it, so. You know, and this really um is a bit distressing, because I think it calls into the question of the difference between. Your personal right to do whatever and over to me, your above that, your obligation to the organization, which is to not do harm. Besides providing best education for students, which is really, and as I got into this too, another issue, a sign issue, that it just popped into my mind, because we've heard this a lot about. That we somehow represent people that specifically check the box by our names when they voted, and of course, we really don't know who those people are, we only know a general number. But we also are responsible to represent our constituency of people who have parents who didn't vote. It's not just the voters or who they might have voted for, we represent everyone in our whole constituency, and we have, our voter registration isn't that high. We have a lot of people who send their kids to school, so they didn't vote for any of us.
I was gonna say, in in first hundred days and and all the other trainings you get, and in ninety two hundred, first paragraph, it's like. That we shall hold education of students of partisan principles, right, groups' interests. And I think the school board, I agree with everything you said, Dan, and that, and I feel the same way. I think city council and school boards are very different, school boards uniquely different in that none of these professionals sitting here, unlike you. They don't like as a group, they don't want conflict, they didn't join education to have people accuse them of harm or. That they joined this very noble position that is not, I was deemed to value in a way that I would like in a utopia for to be deemed to value. Well, we don't about the Wall Street broker or lawyer or anything else, and they join it to completely care for other people's kids. Right, and so it's not city council where if you go and you say something degrading to city council staff about parking or something. Am I sure that parking person hears it, right, or whatever it is, right, but it's not, it's not really an affective, or maybe well, maybe they'll get more tickets. But it's, I just feel education educators are in such different human beings. And I'm always in awe of all of the teaching, all of, right. And just don't think it's a place, and so I look back and decided I was gonna read Ed Code, I read Ed Code, like how did Ed Code start? When did it restart? When did they restart? And so this is great, Dee, I suggest you go read uh, I can send you the link. But where you can go look at all the Ed Code, it works all down, it's thirty six pages where it printed, of just the links to click through to the Ed Code. It's like thirty six pages of links, bless you, keeping track full of them. I was like, huh, I knew appreciation for words, but um. Section two, so the very first section, what what they're talking about and within the section, very, the second thing they talk is that. The code establishes the law, the first thing it says is education code shall be called Ed Code, that's the first. Second thing was, the code establishes the law of this state respecting the subjects to which it relates. And its provisions and all proceedings under it are to be liberally constructed with a view to affect its objectives, which is later on, it talks about students' education. To promote justice. And which is kind of a higher place, like. I feel that sometimes your questions are kind of like, I know I'm a parent, but I wanna go out and go to this party and not take care of my kids. Kind of thing, I want to. I know I have these responsibilities, but I don't wanna hold them, I want to go over here and do what I want to do, and then we can tell them, you can't go do it. This is a higher office, it's not a lower office. You're accepting responsibility of all the employees and all the students in this district. And these questions. Seem more manipulative, like trying to set something up or, all it needs to be answered, if you read bylaws. And you could read the law, don't read the bylaw, but you read the law and the cases and all the case law. And you could read the law, don't read the bylaw, but you read the law and the cases and all the case law and all the attorney general patents and all of that before you accuse people of something because you don't have a right to hold anyone's complaint. You have no way of resolving complaint, of holding complaint. They also have to go, because there's a liability, there's a liability to this district. When you hold that, someone tells you something, they think now the district has been solved. They don't understand where you fall on the district and that you have no authority to solve it. You're not a teacher, you cannot solve it.
I understand that I can't solve complaints. And I don't say that I can.
I beg to differ, your comment, I have a list of a hundred people, and they had all your comments are that you think you're solving them.
I don't think I'm solving them and listening to them, which I think is part of my job as an elected official, is to listen to them.
And then it's too passive. Now, what we're saying in print is that people are saying that's what you do.
Right, so if you listen and don't take action by passing on.
It's the action we're concerned about.
Then we are a great liability. And part of what I would like to have on that two hundred is a reference to the superintendent administrator's contract because even their contracts, we give authority. And it could just be just superintendent, mark, whether, maybe guy, whether it's bigger contracts or just superintendent. But we really have that information under here, and you just go to the contract and look, you know. Oh, all all that section two thousand, all of that authority is there in that contract. And we do not, we are not members. And we have to figure out some way to get along and govern together. And what board bylaws that you have voted for over and over and over and over for are the way we say we're going to govern together. And we vote for it and we need to also.
Governing together, to me, does not mean agreeing with everything.
Of course, you don't have to agree with it. It doesn't agree with them, I a hundred percent agree.
But once, but once it takes, once it moves forward, then my big point is it's incumbent upon us to support that. And so part of what this says is that, you know, you can continue to say vehemently why you were opposed to something. And so that's, for the group of the organization, that's not constructive. Once that question is answered, once the opposition is stated in a meeting, which of course it can be, then we move on. And so we've got issues now that are festering out there because of that, the idea that somehow we bring something back, it'll have a different outcome.
But also, if we do something that we later considered wasn't good, we should turn it back.
But just because we did something one time and more and more. That's if majority decides to bring it back. For me, it's always majority rules. I respect everybody's right to their vote, they have a right to their vote. We don't demean or bully anyone for a different vote. It's your vote and you can feel completely passionate about your principles and that vote. But each of us feel equally passionate. And when it's reflected that the majority rules is bullying or demeaning, I find that really unprofessional. You you can disagree with this, you have a few times, that's fine. But the majority rules this board, it is a board of five people.
I don't think that it's bullying of the majority at all.
That's how it's been portrayed out in the public, so.
Well, that is not me.
That that.
I have never said that.
Okay, it just concerns me. And my biggest concern is individual board members do not have the authority to resolve complaints, period, in ninety two hundred. When you make a statement that you are aware of complaints, a hundred, which is very bothersome to me, it is beholden to you, and you know this from being a teacher, that you must report those complaints to the right authorities. And then we let go because they have processes in place. But to, I'm concerned about comments like repercussions or retaliation.
There's a lot of that, I think.
I disagree with you, Dee. I believe that people can come to our meeting and state a different opinion. There's no repercussion. The repercussion might be interpreted that we did not vote in favor of their policy the way they hoped. That's not a repercussion, that's a resolution they disagreed with.
But I wanna clearly state for she said, that was not what she said. She said that their students, our administrators and our teachers are then hurting their students in some negative way.
That should be reported, that should be one hundred percent reported.
Yes, well, but that has happened.
And if you reported it each time, each of the hundred specific.
Oh, the hundred, the hundred people, many of them of the the latest thing were people that, of course, the December eleventh meeting was over the holidays. So I'm at lots of holiday events, whether it's with the women's club, the art museum, the garden club, my book club, the gym. And everybody is saying, oh, Dee, congratulations on being board president because it was written in the paper and everybody thought that would happen. And I had to say, oh, no, that didn't happen, I, you know.
Explain to them what happened. And so the board majority decided something different and did not break a bylaw. That's actually.
I have explained to them that you came into that meeting and blindsided everyone in the room because that was not your position from the year before and no one assumed that your position would have changed. I seriously doubt that you shared that with all the people that you went to. That was in how I felt. That unfortunately. That would not be true for me, I'm not gonna share that, and that's not true for me.
But the majority did. That's right, the majority did not break a bylaw, and that is true. The majority made a decision that you disagree with the opinion is your right. But to reframe it with things that are not factual does not support the board as a professional organization. And that's what bothers me. The majority decided, they did not break a bylaw and you you'd relate it in a different fashion.
If you didn't break a bylaw, then why did you change, say, it is the intent of the board for each member to rotate through the positions?
As a guideline, as a guideline.
So, it should, it should have come up in a workshop and been like, we're all for what we're supposed to be talking about, aren't we? Okay, sorry, because we went to these questions, we went to, so so back to the questions then here or in tie of ninety two hundred. I'm not sure if we can really talk about these questions here in this way, but.
Right, can we do that or is it against the the attorney?
Well, Mark was tying it with into the ninety two hundred.
Okay.
It's one of the process question of ninety two hundred. In the past, you you told me change his sort to theirs, so I'm doing that on anything I find here. Is that still, is that still important?
And I think, I think all of, all of that list of questions relates to limits of board number in order where the line is.
Okay. Yes.
I don't think it's necessary or productive to go through each one of those questions in this meeting to answer them because generally, the answer is gonna be the same, it depends. Is a, you know, there's a, from the famous Tinker Supreme Court case, students wearing black armbands. Public school students and staff don't shed their constitutional rights at the schoolhouse gate. Board members don't shed their constitutional rights when they get elected to the board. But just like with student speech, it is often very dependent on very specific facts on whether the disruption is, the substantial disruption that may occur is enough to suppress that speech versus student having a right to speak, same with staff members. With each one of those, you can't just give a blanket yes or no answer, it's always, it depends. And and like I said, with some of them, you know, be it depends is you have contractual limitations that not just your policies, but you've incorporated them into contracts. You have legal obligations, I would agree, I would say to any of you, if somebody comes to you and complains that they're being retaliated against or something like that, the Laguna Beach Unified School District now knows of that allegation because of your role. And there are legal obligations to follow up and do something about that. So you can't, if 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 something is reported to you, just like if something is reported to a school site principal, that there there are legal obligations or or can be, depending on the facts of it, legal obligation separate and apart from board policies and contracts that are immediately invoked because of the fact that you're a board member, so.
Right, so if it sits with you as a board member and it doesn't go any further and they they in turn sue for sexual harassment or.
Then we're in trouble.
Then we get sued, do board members ever then personally earn jeopardy, other, I think punitive way or jail time like they are in hold request acts or for other things?
Are we always a group or can one person be single that if they were actually the person that led to that happening?
Or do we have a show?
Do individual board members get sued? Yes. Do individual employees get sued? Yes. Usually, any liability runs to the organization. And and because of, you know, under state law, unless a an employee is acting outside the course and scope of employment.
So the school board members acting outside the school.
Then they can be personally liable. But an example of that is if a supervisor is sexually harassing a subordinate employee, the courts have said that's outside the scope, courses for, courses scope of employment, it's not promoting the interests of the organization and that person can be individually liable. Somebody who falls into the category of knew or should have known and failed to respond accordingly, that usually the liability falls to the organization. But that doesn't mean that there's more citizens coming out, plaintiff's attorneys, they sue every individual they can think of so that that weight is on the individuals. And a lot of times, the, it's strategically, in my opinion, to try to get the individuals to promote a settlement because they don't like being sued, they don't like to have check yes on that refinance application that says, are you currently being sued or things like that. So individuals get sued all the time in state and federal lawsuits. Most of the time, liability if there is any close to the organization.
So there's a request to add language concerning the superintendent's contract into this bylaw.
So what happens?
Well, under, under, I thought under legal references, that's, I'm answering her.
Oh.
Yeah, so under legal reference, can she put superintendent contract under legal references? Or would you have to tie it into the actual boardings somewhere? Maybe tie it into.
I don't know, it it because normally, a a current employment contract is not listed as a legal reference. I I looked your, and this is typical with a lot of school districts, I haven't looked at your teacher contracts, but teachers probably sign a contract when they start.
Use your template, so.
Yeah, and like the school site administrator contracts, teacher contracts, they typically say this contract is subject to the rules and regulations of the state, of state federal law and the state board of education and the the district. So they incorporate that into it. So I don't know if I would add that in there, there might be a way to add. Into ninety three ten.
So and the other question that might be along that line, but it's further than just a superintendent. So as far as the group or the individual, an individual board member makes comments in a meeting or I guess also outside a meeting, but in a meeting, that calls into question performance of superintendent or other administering employees. And that that person decides that those comments have done damage to their professional reputation. And so is that then going to come as a district? Yeah, a suit against the district or against the individual who actually made the statement?
Potential.
Are we, do we have to take on the burden of that as a, as the whole board? Is that how it would come?
Or be censured?
Because then I think it's, I think then it becomes more of a challenge for us to make sure that that we get cooperation with what the essence of this policy is.
The uh. I'm trying to remember the the case, I think it might would be one of the Brown Act, public speaking cases that's out there. But the, and I'll get to a specific answer to your question. But the, one of the things that was emphasized in that case is when a board sits in open session, it's sitting as a legislative body, as a policymaking body. When it's sitting as an employer, that's in closed session, that's confidential, that's separate. So there's that distinction there. If public critical comments are made in open session about an employee, that could be a violation of an employment contract, which would be a suit against the board because the the board is the other party to the contract, not individual board members. There could also be a claim of violation of privacy. State, the California constitution explicitly has a privacy, a right to privacy, federal law, it's it's not as explicit. So there have been, you know, public disclosure, whether it's in a board meeting or a press conference or whatever the case may be, or making a a statement out in the community, there can be a violation of privacy. That is the kind that would, that where it wouldn't surprise me that it's against the board and the individual who made the comments. So again, it could be, could name the individual. But managers, entities are usually responsible for the things that their managers and their employees do and say. So most of the time, liability flows back to the district as a whole. But that doesn't mean that individuals can't be named and sometimes be at risk of liability based on this.
Could you give us a rough, or maybe this is actually an engagement type conversation? I don't know if I'm, if I cross, if I cross, just let me know. But like what those outcomes, even if I guess, what those outcomes can be financially to the district, which takes money from the teachers, the students, the, right, to educate for the late years, certainly coming up with a random number of hundreds, it's round and addressing and holding all administrators against it. Like what, what's like a legitimate business, like what a liability could look like? Um, if if that comes up in our next closed session, like I think that'd be helpful to like understand how liable that is. It's not a little thing to the district to violate people's contracts and student contracts.
Yeah, it it should be, I mean, it's another, it's another real, it depends, you're right.
I know.
Something, when you're talking about specific facts and circumstances that are, you know, a specific potential litigation, that's a closed session conversation. So in general, your question invokes, what is your insurance coverage, what is your deductible? You know, your excess liabilities, because a lot of times, insurance can become involved in this and in some, and in some circumstances, it's not. So and and so that can be a very district-specific question based on what JPA they're in and what the scope of the coverage is and.
Can you?
The extent to which some, some types of cases, some policies, for example, they cover the costs of defense. They pay the attorneys to defend, but they don't pay any judgment. So it 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 really, it really depends. And then what a judgment is, is usually, you know, a very dependent on the facts.
If we, if we, I don't know if you can censure someone, even if you don't have a censure policy, it's something that can still occur. But if we did have a policy in place and we did follow that policy and do those things, does that help limit that liability, do you think? Is that why some districts have them? I mean, you could do without having one, that's a whole.
You you might wanna hold that discussion because that's.
Oh, that's right, we have a, yeah, so then you're up. Okay, we can hold that one, sorry, I know, skip it around.
So back to ninety two zero zero, so where are we, are we reviewing this? Should I think for some of us emphasize what we perceive is our responsibility to adhere to this? Any more discretion on this item?
Well, and Mark's gonna provide clarification.
And if you add superintendent contractors or records?
Well, no, not there, he said, he said in ninety three, he uh, one of the board policies, and I tend to to pull up from that.
Yeah, I think, I have a suggestion.
That could tie there. Um, I think it's important to always remember they're there, right? That we have contracts and we agree to things within them. And then when you go through your clarification, I guess if there's consensus of of anything else that you need to clarify within this authority by law, right? Uh, when you do go through it, and when you do this, however, responding back to Jan and the board, if you could clarify anything there. And then I would really like any cases you think would be helpful for us to understand. If you would tell Victoria, Victoria Research, I don't know how that comes about. But like AJ stuff's really hard for me to find without having access to Westlaw or something, checking.
You for ninety two twenty?
Yeah, because there, I know there are a lot of cases and everyone's all find one. And it'd be really great to have. And it'd be really great to have those here. Because it helps us understand the depends, not as, as us legally trying to figure out what depends, but that like what it really does depend. And then sometimes you see those judgments and it's.
We reviewed this at our other policy workshop and we kept it as it was. So we did not bring it forward as a first reading, because we didn't make any changes. So we're, it's been problematic to some of us about adherence to this in our viewpoint. So whether, yeah, it would be helpful if our deployments were similar, or our interpretation was similar. But it doesn't seem to be.
Because I'm a variable board and you agree on how we're going to govern and you're part of the board.
No, but I still have, am I right?
It doesn't say clearly.
So you're indicating to us basically that you're not going to comply with this.
Well, then we should bring it forward and have everybody answer.
Well, my complying, it depends on what you mean by complying.
It limits our.
Not being a district diverse and not to damage the reputation of the district so that it takes away from our focus on education of students. And so it's, right now, there's something going on out there. It's continually popping up and we can get to that later, but there's significant misinformation that is there obligations to correct because of the damage to the students. So, but there, there's a difference between correcting something that you don't believe is true. So how many times would someone need to be told that something isn't true before it would be incumbent upon them to make that correction?
She's saying.
I just put that, I put that out as a question, then I'm just saying, we have a real basic problem in that I'm not sure how it's solved, which ties into the whole issue that's come up also in public meetings about trust. Trust level, which is really problematic, problematic to the damage that that does to the district and the liability it puts in center. So this policy alone isn't going to address that and solve that.
I do think that we should put cases with the references on it and we should bring it forward.
Okay, so we get this first reading then at our next meeting? Is that what you're, is that what you're asking, Carol?
I am. Are you going to get case law from me?
I, I look, CSBA, I mean.
Did you make a, did you make a following meeting? I mean, it doesn't have.
CSBA is usually pretty good about putting the irrelevant.
Cases.
Case law and attorney general opinions.
I have. General, yeah.
And, and like I said, this ninety two hundred is general and a lot of it is aspirational. And.
So you can't.
It's aspirational, you can't.
But it's how we. But it's how we agree to govern. That's what aspiration is, is that we will govern, lead for common justice, which means equity and when our focus on the students, not focused on.
But equity.
One board member who, who feels that her job is to be the administrator and it is not. And put our district at jeopardy and.
Not the administrator, but feels it's her job to sit or, or listen to students, parents, grandparents.
Right, and once you listen, then you have to bring that forward.
I think your first, I think when we first started to say as well, where the next slide stick up for, that's where you.
That's what you're doing.
Well, bring, bring their consumers forward. Because that's perception. But that's perception and when sort of people speak to us and when we see the things they're writing, that's what they're saying.
Right, it's not your job.
So none of the rest of us do that, that only you do that.
Okay, so here, so you think, because I'm just like, I can't be present.
No, I never said.
Yes, you did. No, she said it helped me. I can't tell you how many comments I have about that. But you.
I said, I wanted you to present. Let's not argue with you. She said, she said it's on the recording and I did have a comment on that, that they found that a poll.
But, but in here, you felt like you have to save me or that something's wrong. And I take that that is your personal personhood and you have to check that at the door because we are responsible for three thousand or however, I should know the exact number. But how many students were responsible for and how many employees were responsible for? And that, we are the leadership role to them. And when we say we don't trust the people in our organization that we lead, that means, what are you saying? That we are, that you yourself are dishonest, that you are not trustworthy because you don't trust the organization that you lead. You're leading it. You're leading it by example. An example you're presenting doesn't allow me to sleep at night. And you are not saving them. When they complain that there's been a sexual harassment, there's been this, there's been that, all these, all these horrible things that you bring up, that you have not told the people who.
I told Dr. Valoria.
You are to tell them, you are to give the information, the exact email, the exact communication to him for him to take care of.
I do, I do.
So you're a hundred list.
Hundred, you were.
Your hundred list.
No, those people were all upset about what had happened. And if you want.
That's different than retaliation.
If you, no, you're not talking about that. But they were saying that they didn't want to come because of fear of retaliation. If you want, I can ask them all to start emailing Dr. Valoria. Is that what you want?
That's what they should be doing.
That's what they should be doing.
Indeed, that's our process.
Everyone will talk to you.
That is a process.
Everyone will talk to you.
If you were seriously concerned about that being an issue, you would want them to do that because you would want to emphasize to him that that concern is out there. And then we can look at it as a, on a larger issue so that it doesn't just fester out there in the community and then people start saying to each other, oh, did you hear that if you complained in the district, they retaliated against your kid?
Yeah.
So you would want those people to do that. It doesn't like a thing saying, oh, we're going to just, what your tone was, like, oh, you want them all to email him? Like it'd be a nightmare for him. No, we should have that information.
There's not one time a parent, because I'm a parent at the high school. I'm there a lot. There's not one time I haven't encountered a parent that had an issue and I say, all these capable, amazing cabinet members are public servants. They are here to serve you and your children. I urge you to email Lisa Winston, Jeff Dixon, Alicia, because they are competent, thoughtful leaders in this district. I am not an administrator. Please email them with your questions. They are gracious, they are smart. That's what I do. And they say, oh, thanks. And I reaffirm, these are public servants. They serve the schools. If I have a kid who has an issue through my own daughter, I call Dr. Valoria immediately, within five seconds. There's an issue, I want to make sure it's followed through. And he takes it, these are competent, smart people. And what you are doing is accusing them of being less than that in public meetings and in your circle of friends. And instead of trying to resolve an issue that maybe someone comes to you with, you embrace it as your charge. And I do not believe that's our job. Because you are then advocating, instead of for three thousand students, you're advocating for this very narrow line instead of looking at general policy processes, how we address all students who have issues, whether it's suicide, whether it's depression, whether it's difficulty with homework, it doesn't matter. We need to have, address and honor every issue every child has in this district and parent.
Okay, so, so you're going back and forth between the three thousand and the individual issue?
Because I put it in the hands of the people who manage three thousand students and all the, because they are the competencies, they are the experts.
They're the individuals and we don't even know all the issues they may deal with.
They're the individuals. Right.
Because they don't bring those to us on an individual basis. But the ones that come to us, you pass them on.
Right, our heads are in ed code. Like that's where your answer is. You go to ed code, say, do we change the policy? Do I hear enough things that we need to adjust a policy? Their job is the individual person to change, not yours.
Should we refocus back into our?
Refocus and we're going to bring it back as far as reading.
Well, I guess, so for clarity, we're bringing it back for a first read, but there's technically nothing.
But we're not changing it.
So we don't need to bring it back.
So maybe, or, I think legal reference, I think it's important that we know.
Adherence to the poll is not a reason to bring it back.
Well.
But for clarity.
But there will be a difference in what adherence is. I think adherence is.
I know, but it's, that's, I'm not speaking for the board.
That's an exercise of a problem.
I'm speaking individually.
You can't write that into here. I mean, obviously, I think we can't mandate that, that people. I think if I bring something to Dr. Valoria and nothing is done, how do you know nothing is done?
Well, let me, let me clarify it because it specifically says.
Because the kid.
That's one case with the forty five on text with the counselor or something.
Well. Regardless of the case, I, I go back to this third paragraph.
The others.
The third paragraph specifically reads, so I guess for my clarity, think it would be helpful when it says, any board member approached directly by a person with a complaint should refer the complainant, not the complaint, the complainant, the person
Person, okay. Okay.
to the superintendent or designee. So it's not that any of you hold that complaint. It doesn't say refer the complaint, AKA that you now hold it taken. It says complainant. That's my understanding is that you were referring that person to the appropriate staff.
Right, a hundred percent. And then.
Is that?
And then you let it go. So, so if that person says, I've got you to do that.
We don't, we let it go.
Because I'm afraid of retaliation and I've done my job because I prefer them even if they don't go to you for the complaint.
Well, if you, if you let it go, then you're not following up on it to find out how they dealt with it.
Well, she just said, but they said, we're not going to complain because we're going to have retaliation against us first year. And so I don't understand how you can't.
So.
I don't understand how.
If it's confidential though, how are they, if they come to Dr. Valoria and it's incompetence, then how, how is it related to their first, their students?
Then you're, that, that's in essence what Peggy says. Then there's that sense of, of you don't have the trust or the confidence in the administration to handle it. And that goes beyond Dr. Valoria and then you're, you've got to throw the, whatever psych principle it is into the mix because it's going to get handed down more if it goes to, to Lisa or to anyone else. So we have a huge issue then because that's, if, if that's truly how you feel. Okay, then you're going to.
So we're going to say.
He's saying it's on.
So now we're going to clean the slate, we're going to let all these employees go and we're going to hire new people, like the principal do it?
No, I, no, I feel if I tell somebody to talk to Dr. Valoria and they are afraid to because of retaliation, I've done my job, but I also think there's a bigger issue out there, this fear.
You have not done your job when you allow people to feel that they can be retaliating. It's against the law. You have not done your job. Your job is to, and some of them not be retaliated against. And it is their duty to contact the superintendent when they feel that that is going to happen and express that. That is you do your job.
And that was your.
And if you don't want this job, don't do this job.
The hundred people that were ready to come forward.
The hundred people that didn't want to come forward, it was because of fear. Yes.
Okay.
I, I don't think we bring it back. My opinion is you don't bring it back for a read when it's just about adherence and one versus.
Right, this is, I didn't, I didn't, I didn't, it's a, it's a real roadblock for us.
We're, we're adding a legal reference that can.
You don't add it for legal references, I can just add it. Okay.
I just want to make a follow up.
So yours is going to end here, right?
I would go, I would want to punctuate something that, another it depends situation. If a parent comes to a board member and says, my child is being relentlessly bullied on the playground by other students, there's a legal obligation to follow up on that. I think what I would recommend is that you refer that parent to the principal of the school. Shoot an email to the principal, say that I, I had a complaint about bullying today. If the parent doesn't come to you, then let me know and we can discuss next. Or you identify who the person was. But there are certain allegations that you have to follow up on.
Yes.
Even if a person says, I fear retaliation, I don't want you to do anything about this. I don't, there are certain complaints and allegations that you have to follow up on that you can't. So if it's a significant thing like that, I agree, refer the complainant.
Like a safety issue.
Follow up on it and you're.
And make sure that the person who is going to, who you refer them to is aware that they, that this complaint might be coming to you.
It's not, it's not personal follow up by the board member. It's your, the board member's follow up is to pass it on and then you're out, you step back.
Yes.
So the follow up comes from the district person who you passed it on to.
Yes.
No, I, I have found in those cases, even when they included some things that the parents were shocked by because they heard what their one piece write, whatever it was, that they have gone to the counselors, they've done whatever. And they do follow back up and say, thank you for pointing me in the direction. Now, I do let him know, he lets the principal know or whoever needs to know. Or sometimes you might say, they're already aware of that, right? Or whatever it is, right? But I, I do pass those things on again, the, the ones that are like, right, like it's shocking from the parent's reaction, they're, they're upset. And the only calls that I've ever gotten back are, thanks for pointing me in the direction and things went well. Or how do I address that? Like I don't understand what I'm talking about to somebody, right? It might be something you don't have. And in that case, a board member, we can still speak to that person because they're usually our friend, right? I'm, I'm looking for, they're calling to tell us thank you or whatever it is, it's not.
Yeah, some people are my friends somewhere.
Yeah, I just want to thank you.
And just follow the process.
Okay, we're going to move to the next one, ninety three ten. We're also bringing this back to be discussed because it was referred to a number of times. This is another one that we reviewed at our last policy workshop and we made no changes in it. So it stayed the same and did not come as a first reading. But since it has been referenced a number of times, we're trying to review it again. So we're clear on our policy, how policy process works.
Okay, in. I, Bart's comment on the IBD, like I'm hearing, like, right, I'm interested. If, if, I disagree with any of these bylaws. I can bring, or wanting something added or changed or what, I can bring that here in this meeting is where you bring it and discuss it and that's the start. And you start here. That is the, okay. So it's up to the board member who disagrees to bring something forward and look for, what did you say earlier, look for, to, look for unity. I'm sorry, we're, are we on ninety three ten, board policies?
I think the reference that often comes up is page fifty eight.
Okay, and state of federal law.
And Mark, I believe, addressed this on his earlier comments, but. Page fifty eight, which is, oh, I don't have them, I'm sorry.
You're going to took the last.
It was a last mention of policies. You're.
Oh, in, well, I was looking at the, the last sentence in the first paragraph. That's the one that's.
It's very, yeah.
And I was thinking, right, right, put the cursor, not letting me type.
Okay, can't drive.
But maybe right after districts add.
Oh, in contract.
Uh, legal responsibilities and contracts, comma, including but not limited to.
Oh, that's a nice way to, to retitle it. Thinking.
They're binding as long as they do not conflict with the law and they're binding as long as they are consistent with legal responsibilities and contracts, including.
I think being legally defined, like defined binding laws, like whether I agree with the law or don't agree with the law or agree with, it can define binding. Does, does that mean that the district has a liability on a policy law?
No, this is, this is more of a statement about, yeah, the, the, this is not about individual board member things that we've been talking about.
Board policies.
But you have policies in place and you're, you're defining the extent to which they are binding.
That's okay.
And if you have a board policy provision that's, you know, that there are board bylaw provision that said if, if employees have no free speech rights, then that would be inconsistent with the law. So it's not binding, that portion of policy is not binding. And if you have, the kind of the flip side of it is, if you have a board policy that is consistent with a contractual obligation, consistent with the collective bargaining agreement, consistent with legal responsibility, then it is binding. And by binding, it means the people in this room, the other employees of the school district have, have an obligation to comply with them.
Does it have to indicate policies and bylaws or is, is bylaw, bylaws concerned? Just the policies are encompassing bylaws.
Doesn't it say board policies?
Do policies and bylaws, are they?
Well, I think you use the same. You use the same policy or the, you have the same process for your bylaws as well as.
And I.
I was just wondering, does it have to be specifically called out early? Because there is, you can't spell out bylaws. But I assume that they're the one and the same, but it was like.
I know we said that, I think on the early ed code thing where they have under definitions, I think it defines.
Board policy bylaw, you know, all as one thing.
Yes, and at the top of every page, it says board policy. Yes, and at the top of every page, it says board policies and then.
Oh, right.
Yeah, I think it, I think it actually defines it in there that it's the same.
One and three.
Yeah, I was just making sure.
No, it's the same, yeah. I learned so much from you just like that first.
Were you gonna go back to that last paragraph from the final?
No, it's actually the same thing, it's it's essentially the same wording, just essentially getting it in the end, so.
No, it's the same, it's the same.
Okay, because it's it would say, we have a need to suspend a policy because it was in conflict.
Right, it's in conflict with state law, and that's.
Or a reason, or a court decision, it could be a court decision that requires us to change. Okay.
Yeah, and that last, you really read the two sentences together. Lawyers call it a separability provision that at the very end, it's basically saying if one sentence in here is invalid. Because it's contrary to the law, it doesn't invalidate the whole bylaw, it only invalidates that sentence.
Okay, okay. How I see it. So we'll bring that back, we'll bring that change up, okay, so we're gonna change this first reading. Ninety three twenty one, post session agenda purposes and agendas, this is a review. And we review this. And it stayed, we did not bring it back before, but it seemed to use the first page upon. The purpose. I think that, I think the concern was um if I if I recall, page sixty two. The pending litigation, this is section D. And that that whether that can be discussed in closed session. It's this page, you guys could.
Did she say section?
Yeah. Pending litigation.
Just that in place.
One and two, this section.
Yeah, this is, this is basically a a summary of the Brown Act provisions, a lot of this is the exact language of the Brown Act. But the Brown Act only refers to pending litigation, which suggests that it means it's litigation already filed. But pending is defined as either litigation that's already been uh initiated formally. And then the second is where there are facts and circumstances that there's uh anticipated or potential litigation. And then it goes on A, B, C, and D, and E on the following page are the circumstances that allow for pending litigation closed session. So it's actual or potential.
What would circumstances be as far as actual as a fact, what do the circumstances create?
Well, the uh, sometimes it's very straightforward, like in C, if you get a receipt of a tort claim. Somebody files a claim for damages, then it's automatic, with somebody, number D, somebody stands in open set session and threatens to sue you. Um, and E is a threat made outside of an open meeting, um, but then there are certain parameters, it's usually A and B um that um that apply.
But someone wrote a letter to the editor kind of thing like that? Like if someone wrote a letter to the editor, including, yeah, I'm trying to think of like how that applies, or if there's an email that someone writes, or tried to raise money to sue the district.
Yeah, well, a. A letter to the editor saying, I am contemplating suing the school district for blank blank blank.
Would that fall under?
That would be in B.
In B, okay.
That's facts and circumstances that are known to the plaintiff, they're they're saying publicly.
Oh. Okay.
And then you publicly disclose that before you go in, going into a closed session, discuss potential litigation arising from a letter to the editor or blank.
And what if it's more um. What falls in E more of the. Outside of the meeting or something like a letter to the editor?
Yeah, well. I think E contemplates uh. A statement made to an employee or a board member, directly to a board member, employee outside um of A, um, a meeting. Where you have to make a, you know, a written record of it, um, you know, on this date in time, I I received a um a threat of litigation. So the 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 example that I gave could, it could logically fit in B or E. And then A is if we know about something. You know, if the administration knows about something that that could cause litigation, but nobody else knows about it. And you want to keep, and you need to, there's a reason for keeping it confidential, that's that would be A. The all of it, all of this is because um.
And where are some of the reasons?
You can't invite me or any other of your counsel to closed session just because of attorney client privilege.
Because we just have a privilege.
Yeah, the the Brown Act is narrower than that, you can only have a a conference of legal counsel if there are circumstances. Where uh either litigation has been initiated, or in the opinion of that lawyer, based on existing facts and circumstances, there's significant exposure to litigation.
Okay.
That's when you can, and then you discuss that potential litigation.
Because otherwise we could call you in for other reasons around negotiation, or some other thing that wouldn't be fair, right, that we have, that's the point, okay, is that all that's.
Yeah. For example, uh, A, you want to have a Brown Act workshop, you know, and but you want to be able to ask questions about things that were done previously and ask your attorney, did we violate the Brown Act? That wouldn't be a basis for a closed session, what I, my answer to that question would be attorney client communication. But that's where those kinds of questions should be answered separately in writing, because you're not allowed to just have a closed session, because you want to get legal advice from your lawyer, but ask to be related to potential litigation.
So attorney client, so if I were to.
Or to share existing litigation.
So if I shared, say you were, you were to write something, a brief, which kind of a form of, oh, yeah, if I share that with the board, that's attorney client privilege, right, right.
And then.
There was actually a a uh California Supreme Court case where um the argument was that distributing a legal opinion to members of the city council. Was a meeting under the Brown Act, um, and they hadn't posted it, and the the California Supreme Court basically said, I'm opening your mail, it's not a meeting. So you can distribute things in writing, it's when it becomes a back and forth, so things to change.
Oh, okay, okay.
Communication is out, okay.
Yeah.
That, then that's when it becomes a meeting.
That's a representation, or if it's pending litigation or something like close, but not, we're not that court filled.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah.
Okay, so within our group of board members, so we had at least one, I'm not sure if it was the second one, also members of the public that spoke to us in in an open session.
Yeah, that's good.
That said that they were encouraging member Perry to bring action against us for violating her rights. So how how do we consider that as, do we then just wonder if that's coming, and then we wouldn't confer view on that, because, I mean, how would we do that when it's one of, it's a five board members?
That would be something, that's that's a specific legal question that I don't think I should answer in a public sitting, I'll do that in writing.
Okay, right, right. Okay. Thank you. And then just. So we're not making changes to this at this point?
Now, this is really. Right out of Brown Act.
Yeah, it it's basically just.
Yeah, it it's actually expanded from, I mean, I don't know what it was some years ago, I mean, there are more rules. Which one are we doing next? Uh, next we are at nine three two two, agenda meeting and materials, okay. This is another um, one that's really at the heart of some of the issues. I would hope that in some ways we could change some policy to actually reflect what we do and declare out this huge misperception of what goes on, and I would say that not just with our current superintendent. Anytime over the years that I've been in this position, I've not put anything on the agenda that I brought in and said, let's put this on the agenda. That's um, the agenda has been prepared by our people that we hired for the departments, they come to the agenda review, it's just for. It doesn't, it doesn't belittle it, it's an important task to then really efficiently, but it allows that to happen. It isn't to say, they don't sit there and say, okay, what would you like to put on the agenda, I've not, I've never done that before, and um. So what we have done, to me, what we've adopted as a practice of bringing something forward to see if, not just if the board, I mean, all five board members, if I've got something on the agenda. Then we look to our people that do the work for us and say, where does this fall in the timeline, if we, we of course have the authority to say, no, I, we demanded it be on the next agenda, so drop everything you're doing now. And then prepare this item, because items do have work behind them to prepare. And I'm just, I would like to have a policy that actually reflects what we have decided is a practice we might follow, so that there's not this idea that it's done. And that you, nobody else has the right to do it, and that's, that doesn't exist, and so that policy that that doesn't reflect what happens. That's my biggest concern on this.
Well, and then, I have, I have that same concern, also, um, Mark, the other thing in the policy is, when you read through it, it takes you to, I'm on the second. Okay, it takes you to if you're a board member, like what all the process is, but it leads off, because it says, it's talking about board, the last paragraph of page.
First page.
You know, I have the one on mine, I marked up the one that was on my.
It's on the screen.
So where are, oh, thank you, so any board member, member of the public can request that matter within jurisdiction, the board be placed on agenda with a meeting, right, so it starts there and talks about. Any member of the public, board member, and then when you get to the next page. It continues along explaining, at at all of this makes sense, um, right, there's. You're determining, is there jurisdiction, you're determining timing, you're determining whether this is just an information item, someone needs more information, you're having a conversation with whoever, you know, presented the information or made the request. But it goes on to talk about the board member, and it doesn't talk about the member of the public anymore, because it talks about the board member. Board member superintendent denied request from the board member to place the item on agenda, board member may request the board to take action and determine whether the item should be placed on the agenda, which we do at the end of the meetings, right, you can bring it there. But it doesn't mention anything about the public anymore, the public's kind of dropped off. And I didn't see it picked back up.
Yeah, my my read on that is the first paragraph you pointed out, it starts with any board member or member of the public. That's an expectation for both of those categories that you submitted in writing um at least two weeks before the scheduled meeting. The next paragraph refers to requests from members of the public to place an item on the agenda. The information, the the paragraph after that.
Oh, yeah, right.
Refers to requests from a board member to place an item on the agenda.
Right.
So basically, it's that um, there's the the legal reference in here at at code thirty five one forty five point five. And I think I mentioned it the last meeting, that the uh, the he versus Garcia, um, in particular case.
Exactly.
Addresses the scope of that, so that paragraph about the board president and superintendent deciding whether it's going to be uh placed on the agenda. I think it would be consistent with those legal parameters for a board member.
There's before, wait, before agenda board member, so mine was the thought about the policy, so they determine whether it's issue, whether it's covered the existing policy or administrative regulation, or they just need some information, right? Or for the perspective of the site, because the site's working on something around that, right, like they just need some information. But let's say it goes through all that, and they say, no, I want this, you know, type this up, I want this on the agenda. I did read where there's discretion if it's not in the jurisdiction in that case.
Well, and yeah, and the statute refers to it being correctly related to the district's business, and in that case, because.
I know. But. Right, not the site business, strictly to the district, that's right, to the district business.
And it was, it was an issue that related to one school, and the decision was.
One school. Rainbow day.
As a matter of policy, the board doesn't make decisions related to activities at individual schools, and um for that reason, they said they they didn't put it on the agenda.
Right.
And it was of help.
Okay, so does that broadly go across to anything that, like the um. When we changed pathways to align with. Since we're in the state of California, UC school systems, so that no one had artificial grade bumps, we also didn't have artificially a teacher, you know, like teachers didn't get bumps for those pathways as well. Clean all that up. People want to keep discussing it, we already discussed it, which I I I know it's covered, but people could put anything they want on an agenda, so without reading those cases, right, put anything you want on an agenda. But it doesn't mean that they have to do any work for it, does it? Like if you're like five, you can go on the agenda, but they need to come present and talk about it, first one wants to play on the agenda, am I confused what I'm reading? There's a lot to comprehend in here, so I'm not, at this, I don't like my husband or my marriage.
I think um. The the courts have applied an abuse of discretion standard to the decision on whether or not to put an item on the agenda. So to use an exaggerated example, if a member of the public, you make a decision A at your first meeting in March, member of the public doesn't like it.
Perfect.
So I want A back on the agenda at the next meeting in March.
Okay.
And let's say it goes on the agenda, and no board makes, the member makes a motion to change it, they just speak for three minutes, and then you can move on to the next board item. And then they make a request to put it back on the agenda.
Or the next.
I don't think it would be an abusive discretion to say, no, we've decided that, the board, the board considered it fully, um, and there's been one opportunity to uh for them to. Hear from you for three minutes and decide whether to um reevaluate that decision. I don't think it would be an abusive discretion to not put it on, I mean, the board has the authority to um have reasonable regulations so that it can get its business done.
Right.
It's a business meeting you're conducting, um, and not a town hall meeting that you're conducting, and and so you can control your agenda in that way.
That's the point of it. Right. Right.
So um. I don't.
I'm just looking to make sure we're not violating any of that, I get the discretion, I didn't realize the discretion could be used broadly, I kind of just thought, oh, they only have one high school, it's not a side grade, you know, do.
But then, your example to me sounds more like a uh a policy, you happen to have one decision, but you were really as acting as a legislative body. The Mooney versus Garcia decision was an activity at one school on one day, and a parental organization should be changed from a certain kind of activity to a different kind of activity in the courts, and we don't get in the middle of that stuff.
Right.
Um, and so uh.
But this is a, the thing I'm talking about.
Yeah, I mean, you obviously can have, if you're going to modernize one of your elementary schools, the item on the agenda is only going to be about that school, but it's not an activity for one day, so.
Um.
Case by case kind of uh. A scenario.
What does a a member of the public do if they've made a request and it's denied? Do they have?
Well, the recourse would be to to file a lawsuit like the parent did in in the Mooney decision.
And. So second only recourse to file a lawsuit.
They could come speak for three minutes at the beginning of every meeting and share whatever.
Well, yeah.
And that is everyone's public, that is your public, the public has a right to waste, to utilize our time in the way they would like to use our time.
Yeah, that person, yeah, you're right, you could come during a public comment on the one agenda.
Your first, your first issue referring to that request that came basically, that was presented to us.
That, and just kind of the thought of um. In my, yeah, that is, but also just, yeah, but also just my thought of like, how do you just put something on the agenda in the sense of, not that I have anything for the agenda, it just makes me curious about how.
Yeah.
Yeah, Carol, so Carol asked, you know, so what's, say, a request comes in, completely different to uh unrelated to the more recent one, but just. A request comes in, to what degree does that request then dictate staff work, is the question that that Carol was questioning, so.
That's what we were.
Does that mean now this person's requested, you know, a a presentation on, now, that's the public now directing staff's work, not the board directing staff's work.
Mm-hmm.
So then, yes, it would be added as an agenda item, but with no formal presentation from staff until the board would say, yes or no, we would like you to bring this back as a ball of presentation. So that was the question that Carol had posed. yes or no, we would like you to bring this back as a formal presentation. So that was the question that Carol had posed. And, and I think the clarity that I provided was, was that, that I believe it would be, it could be added to the agenda. Um, but it, it does not indicate staff would be necessarily preparing information unless.
So you just put it there and no, nothing done for it in the sense, and then it would just be.
You would give them, as, as Mark said, uh, in his example, the person wanted it back on, staff added it back, or it was added back onto the agenda. The board listened to that person, there was no formal presentation.
Right, that's a public, then they would publicly comment on that, and then it's like.
And then, and then the board would, we could make a decision.
Right, and, and I can see public comment on things on agenda equal to, they could put something on the agenda and make public comment to it. Right, it's kind of a same, like, but I don't, no, that's what I'm trying to get clarity. I don't want someone to feel they're being denied a right because they can go and speak about it because it's not on the agenda. I don't feel that it's staff's, I, I, I guess I'll say overstaffed because we direct the superintendent, he has his duties. So the board was elected to direct, to hire, support, direct superintendent than their responsibilities. So if the board isn't directing the superintendent and then doing anything about that item, the person got their chance to talk about their item.
It appeared on the agenda.
It appeared on the agenda.
Yes, and it goes, but.
And nothing happened with it. And I think that actually is the intent, because this is a district business, it's not, it's not school site. I totally like the distinction in that. It makes it easier. That case really does allow you to look at stuff and label it right now. This really is a district level policy. We already voted on it though, so kind of about, does Brown Act affect the fact that we already voted on, so thus we don't go back and redo that? But we review it within, we review it within updates and stuff, but.
Well, I think.
It's not just that we voted on it as far as public placing items on the agenda. That's.
Yeah, it's in the.
It's the law, right.
It's not in the Brown Act, it, it just, it only applies to school districts.
Oh, it's on the Brown.
So we. And that would mean something that we could do going forward to satisfy that criticism is that we just don't, we just put something by name on the agenda.
Oh, that's right. I think that's.
The person who.
Email is submitted.
That's a, that's an option.
The person who asked for that, then we can speak to it and then the board will discuss it.
But kind of board member, you have presentation, because that's where I put up the next step, what was it?
Well, well, that's what we've had in the past. But before, but before, but before we get to that.
I think that actually.
When, when did we have that?
But before we get too bitter, before, I think we actually put the email the request comes with, with their request, just on the agenda. And I don't know what you create, it, it, it was information or action, they're asking for action, and we take no action. There's no action, but it still doesn't mean we're directing superintendent to do anything. He is not thus directing.
I'm just concerned this format that was sent to us.
No, no, we were just, we would put it into our format.
Yeah.
Does that mean a, a person outside of the, the scope of knowing what the incident outside, or you can't say there's a budget impact? I mean, they can't, they can't make those assumptions as far as it's committed in our agenda.
Right, they can't. I didn't mean like that one. I, I didn't mean like that, I just meant like that, that information's presented. However, it's presented, it goes on the agenda, we are not, unless we take action, or we do something, we are not directing superintendent to do anything. It's just there. I really would, okay, now jumping over to what it's, what it remembers.
I have sent it with that, yeah. I, well, let, let me finish, let's finish with this one. I think perception is if something is on the agenda and, like you said, they're not expecting to take staff time to do anything. But they would like to make a presentation.
They got three minutes.
With a series of people and they would like to be able to use the overview.
Yeah, I accept that's what the law states.
Well, that's, I'm saying that's the perception. I don't know that that's what the law states.
We had a.
But they're thinking, I was, if it's an agenda item, they can present their, you know, they can present how this is maybe hurt students by having it this way. They can present the districts, et cetera.
Well, there, it's, that's public comment, so your rules are limit, limits public comment on the item. They, there's a formal presentation that they can provide. It would be three minutes.
Right. Like you said, public.
So the, the group that did the non-toxic, like the getting rid of Brown Act, I thought they were quite, um, thoughtful and then they each spoke their three minutes.
Mm-hmm.
They had some, uh, supporting documents they handed out to us. Um, I thought they utilized the system in what I think the system is made for, which was, they organized, they were respectful.
They already did contact with Mr. Dixon. I mean, they already had some contact with him.
What? Yeah, so they already had information, but they, their supporting documents were valuable, but our staff didn't do anything. And yet, we got it in a, I just, I found that to be.
Well, they were professional and polite and, I mean, it was, it was that child of presentation as far as being accusatory and.
Well. And they were also aware that we couldn't, because it was not on the agenda, there was no action to the item. It was a, kind of an item you think about, or you reflect on, or you might in your board. So to me, they were one perfect package for me.
We have to be clear then that these things are coming as information to the board, that a person, then that, that's, how do we differentiate between a person that wants an action item on? They can't put an action item.
Well, you don't have to give an action board.
So if it's an action item, then it'd be if we're going to go any further with it, would that mean the action?
Well, we would just take no action. We're still boards.
No, but I'm still, we still have to vote on it if it's an action item.
Well, no.
And we don't have to vote on it.
No.
Not you, uh, the, what I've, what I've seen at meetings is, this item was placed on the agenda by a member of the public.
No, we didn't, we're not motioning, not shooting the sun.
You have three minutes to speak to the item, the person speaks, then at the end, do I have a motion? If there's no motion, or if there's a motion and no second, it's done and you move on to the next agenda item.
Yeah, we start.
So I think it's, you know, I mean, it's two-step process really. Step one is, does it get onto the agenda, you know, based on the criteria in that echo section? And, and if it does, um, members of the public have a right to, uh, comment on it. Some, and I don't recall yours, but some boards have bylaws that limit total amount of public comment time.
Would you? Twenty minutes.
On any, to twenty minutes. So if you have ten speakers that have submitted cards, you can reduce it to two minutes for each one. Things like that, that's, those have been upheld. And then another thing that comes into play that people try to do sometimes is they, uh, four people fill out cards and then three of them say, we want to give our time to the fourth one.
Right.
You don't have to allow that. Um, you can limit individual speakers are limited to the designated amount of time. And then, uh, however many speakers are there, there are, if there are none, if there's one, if there's a, a certain number, uh, allow that speech to, to occur. And if it's an information item, there can be brief discussion about it if the board wants to. It's an item for action. Then under typical parliamentary rules, the board doesn't discuss it, discuss it until there's a motion and a second. And then that is the floor, floor discussion. But if there's no motion or no second, then.
It dies right there.
It died right there and we go on to the next.
So I'm thinking, we, we make this known that that they're going to do a process like this, but to my knowledge, we haven't done this before. I mean, it's been decided outside of that level, it hasn't been decided right there, putting it on the agenda for the public. So, uh, would we legally be allowed to limit the number of those that appear on anyone's agenda? And what I'm thinking of is our one speaker who spoke nine times for the last meeting, and I think thirteen times the meeting before. If we had sufficient of five or six items to put on the agenda, and can we limit the number that we would put on at a time and we can delay them?
Yes.
Could we just lump those together as public, they just call it public agenda.
Because I could see that, I could see it as him that way. And I can think of some of the topics that were raised as far as criticisms of us, if those are allowed to come agenda items.
But could we put them all as like one public agenda item?
Obviously, why is it not agenda item?
Isn't that public comment on non-agenda items? I mean, isn't that what that's.
Well, they want it just on the agenda, they don't want it to be a non-agenda item.
Right, they want it on the agenda, so they don't.
Yeah, I don't think, um, opportunity for public criticism is an item for an open session.
No, I'm saying things that have been within that criticism. I see those, the things that have been within the criticism, I see coming as an agenda item.
Yeah.
Well, but then you'd use the discretion of whether that's district business.
Well, this, this, one of the particular criticisms was that everything in the entire world is under our jurisdiction.
Yeah, so, that's not so.
So, then, then if you answer that in, in the negative, that no, that isn't our jurisdiction, then that could be the agenda item. What falls, a definition of what falls under the criticism.
That was the case, we're on climate change.
But, but, but someone presenting, but someone presenting who's not a California lawyer, just but what's in our jurisdiction is not item on the agenda. Pay a lawyer to.
I understand that I'm, I'm like being facetious because, um, because that's what we're dealing with.
I don't, I don't worry. But that's why I think each of those are covered in that policy, just the way it is of deciding that. I'm, there are ones that, um, should just go on the agenda and they should go on the agenda for them to have their place on the agenda.
It should be really clear.
It's the, it's the law that allows it to be there. We do not have to take action.
Just think, we, you know, we, we, we're being prepared for that, you know, fifteen speakers to one agenda item.
And then I'm going to tie in, I sense that a board member might, might want to present with the people putting things on the agenda. That's what we're starting from.
Well, then you can't motion anything if you do. If you leave your diet, that diet, the diets, the diets.
Is that true?
We don't have the diets, we join chairs.
Yeah, but then you join the public, you, you remain, you don't ever get to vote on that item, ever.
I think, I think you're a member of the public hat, if I, like, use the hat analogy, is a different than a board member hat. Sitting on the diets as a member of the legislative block, two different roles.
Right.
Correct. And I, if I leave it to go public, to go, they, then when that comes up to vote, I can't go back and vote, I'm not public. And I, and I, I can find that case.
You go, you can also go back to your seat, take the motion if it's a second.
You, you can't, you don't have the right to motion something, don't even as a public citizen.
I don't know.
There's actually a case, there's actually a case on it.
If it's, if it's one subject item, what do you think? And you go up and speak it?
I think it rarely comes up, I'll just be blunt here, because if a board member wants somebody, something on the agenda, they can usually find, uh, somebody else to put it on the agenda and present on it. And then they can stay in their role as a board member. I mean, that's just, that's just a factor.
Right, and if it doesn't get on the floor, then the board members have to discuss it.
Correct.
Correct. Right, so that's a second.
So we brought this one back several times.
Yes. Okay. Well, and I'm not sure, I do have a couple of little questions. So I don't know, do we need to change anything in here, Mark? Under, under that board president's decision, to decide whether, that we're taking out before placing the item on the agenda, they even leave before placing the item on the agenda, there?
Leave what, leave?
Uh, I'm not correct, but they were taking out before placing the item on the agenda, because it really just kind of ends with, we're going to provide them.
I, I don't know where you are, I'm sorry.
Oh, the board president and superintendent, the first paragraph on, on your screen. We're striking that sentence or before, I mean, the end of the sentence of the first paragraph, before placing the item on the agenda.
We are, it's in the first part of the sentence. In addition, before placing the item on the agenda, is at the beginning of the sentence, it's just crossed off the end of the sentence.
And that word may.
We might want to.
Under that agenda preparation and considering current practice, instead of develop, can we say review?
Well, hang on, he's working, Mark's working on this one as well.
Because I guess you could full reveal into the develop context, but I think when a person reads this, they really see that as something that is done by one person, the superintendent. Which I, does not reflect what you do. And I don't think we want to do that.
I talked to a city council owner this weekend, John Peter prepares and his staff prepare the agenda for the city and then they review it with, um, like, with the.
So back to that paragraph. The end of the first sentence within the subject matter jurisdiction of the board. And, and, and this is from the statute, and directly related to school district business. And then the next sentence, uh, just for clarity, items not within the subject matter jurisdiction of the board or directly related to school district business.
And then we are leaving that may right after that as may and not shall, because it really is the, the shall of may against discretion, right?
Yeah.
I like may there because it gives discretion, but I'm just clarifying that as why.
Yeah, or, or should be, uh, read to.
So leaving may is that. There are lots for discretion versus shall.
And then Janet's question was related to.
The first. Yeah. Under agenda preparation.
Oh, I get you.
Yes, I just have a few more time, yeah.
Review instead of develop.
Got it, okay, got it, okay.
I mean, an agenda needs to be developed. Yeah, I think.
Because the pro, that it processes.
So, so review the development of the agenda. I just, because I look to.
What you're getting at is board president reviews the agenda that staff puts together.
Exactly.
The perception that's floating around is that somehow things get on the agenda because I want them there and nobody else on the board gets to do them.
And that's not true.
That's not true, that's not true on the law.
That's why you shouldn't have to clarify there because you develop it. It wasn't true with previous superintendents that I've worked with.
Well, he said something like the superintendent in coordination with staff shall develop and then the superintendent will be.
And review it? Because Victoria's actually finding the number, she's the lady here. Well, I know what you're going to do, like, when they're here, one, one more part to take out.
I think it's, it's the, the challenge of, of both markets. One, you have the perception that, you know, the board president has increased authority to just create an agenda. The other flip side of that is the perception that somehow I'm the only one who develops the agenda. So it's, it, which, it, you know, in conjunction, we, we have obviously obligations to budget certain interim.
Yeah, these guys all work there.
Things that we have to do in different timelines, and those are, those are set and kind of processed. So I, I guess it is a little bit of a, one person reads it one way, another person reads it another, so they, you know.
Well, you can just put.
Is it, can you clarify it? I don't know that you can, you know, because you're trying to meet two different needs, right?
It can be like.
One, it's one person sees it one way.
I, I, I mean, it can just be like, would they comply with the law, the laws?
Well, and then you're, then you're probably, uh, changing that. I mean, my inclination is to leave it like an S. And I think you better, I know you have a bylaw on the board president that lists the, uh, duties of a board president that might need to be changed if you change this also.
Oh, we just, I think, didn't we change that though? Didn't we change the.
We just, we just put in board president, well.
But I think you did, you put someone in that tried to reflect it on that. Consult the superintendent designate preparation for the agenda.
And that's in place now. Consult.
Because we have, in this.
I would say this is now going back to that, this one. How about, um, the superintendent as secretary to the board? In consultation with the board president, will develop the agenda for each regular and special meeting. Then the, the language in the two is aligned.
Should we include it all, the, the other staff that, or just leave it as a superintendent? Because that's what you made your comment, Jason, about, people think it's, it's you.
Just you, right, it's not your power.
And it isn't, I mean, you're, you're, you oversee all that, but you definitely delegate that to the different specialties that they have in their assistant positions, or even also the directors who prepare items.
That's not, I think that's good wording.
No, that, that, I think.
To, to.
There are batches of the presidents who says, so I think that's a work for me.
Okay, because I would say.
And, and normally, um, but then, maybe not always, but most of the time in a policy or bylaw where it's a superintendent or designate, that's based on.
They include the others.
Or delegating the authority to the superintendent.
Okay.
The, this is more of a day-to-day thing where the superintendent can say, I'm developing the agenda I need, your agenda items by blank. And then the superintendent. Your agenda items by blank, and then the superintendent puts the agenda together in consultation with the board president.
It's only been recently we've had the issue with this for the, you know, the, this has been interpreted as just being something that's done to deny others access. There's never been a question like that before, so just that's all my reasons to try to clear that up.
Any other changes worth mentioning?
Um.
Just a time check, we only have about nine more minutes, so I'm gonna.
Um, right.
We have two more.
Yes.
On, um, the next page, you. Right above agenda. Which dates the page.
Dissemination. Dissemination.
To the board members about that, where it talks about any board action to all borrowing a hundred thousand dollars in wars will be discussed, considered and elaborated upon. Is this about our policy about moving the money back and forth?
No, it's more about, I mean, Jason can say.
No, consent.
It's a standard where it's a consent.
I would say consent.
That that's probably goes from years ago when people say.
So we're borrowing like that.
Got something here in consent, you're just, you're not talking about it, you're just approving it, so it kind of puts a a number that you look at as far as making sure that it's. That's fair, right?
And Mark, we sort of consent items, we're consent items, like we've already voted on contracts, we've already voted, like, we're paying people and consent is really just passing that through, not having to look at.
No, we look at it.
Well, no, 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 I mean, like, not having to take ac- action on it in who's, I shouldn't say look, that's why we mean.
Yeah, you could pull something off.
So generalizes of the districts, is it, it goes under consent.
Yeah. But if it was something new or whatever, it comes as a general contract, yeah.
Don't make it all out. It's and that's a that's that's not a legal question really, it's consent items are items that it is anticipated or not going to generate a lot of discussion or need for.
Is that kind of. Of items. Oh.
Discussion and then, but that's why I've seen in your meetings, that's why something can be pulled from consent if it turns out the staff is wrong on that.
Right.
That one or more board member just wants to discuss a specific item, yeah.
For some common.
Now, is there a difference, it seems like there's a difference now from the previous superintendent about bringing, putting items on the agenda if they don't take up staff time. We all want to be mindful of staff time, but before, um, you could put an item on the agenda and, in fact, I was told to put item, several items on the agenda. And do the background for it. So no staff time is taken.
Well, I guess I think about to.
I don't think we can discuss that situation in another meeting.
That was before me.
I know, but I'm saying that's, well, that's a personnel issue, basically. Well, but it's, I mean, I.
No, it is a personnel issue.
Well, but I'm not understanding, has that change, how 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 do you do that if it's an item for the agenda that is not going to take staff time, is that treated differently?
When we, when leaders change in organizations, if they cut the political, leaders change in organizations, how an organization's then ran and the staff and how things work.
Changes.
Will change based in that change and, um, it's everyone's job to align to the leader they choose.
Ninety-three twenty-two winds out a process for which I'm working without an item which we already, which we just discussed, so.
Yes, right, so it's still in there.
I think that's a process that wouldn't be utilized if there was a client, if there was a process by which a board member may request an item be added, it's.
That's our fault. So there's no difference if it's something that takes staff time or not?
What you guys just as a group put forward was specific to the statement that if the board president and superintendent may request from a board member to place an item on the agenda. That board member may request the board to take action, it's totally, shall we place on the agenda, so that's.
It comes up in the name.
It's been in there, so.
Okay.
So that would be the process that we can utilize, right, any board.
Okay, so is there, is there a pop, so say the board agrees and says yes, then.
Then the direct staff decree a presentation.
Does that, does that mean that you can say, no, I don't want to direct staff to spend time on this, but you can do your research.
Well, I think that goes back to limit support authority, the administrative function, so, um.
So you would decide which way you wanted to go, Dr. Ward.
You know. I think currently that, again, the board, board majority would have a say.
Right.
For me, the board majority said, yes, we want to go and put this on the agenda and the staff in preparation.
But can the board say we want to put it on the agenda, but we don't want staff to spend time on it?
Yeah, the majority of the board said that.
The majority of the board said that.
Majority rules, yeah.
Okay, majority rules, okay, so it could go either way.
Got three votes.
And then I have one more question under agenda dissemination to members of public, she just more down the same. Under, um, only those documents which are just disclosable public records under the public records act, and if they relate to agenda items scheduled for an open session session of a regular meeting shall be available to public. What does that mean?
I'm with.
Oh, she said right here, on your screen.
Yeah, so that's. So when I, when I took my.
And you could have the.
Your first hundred days, it was like, anything you write as a mature board member, please leave a public record. Whoever does it in the.
You could have an agenda item to enter into a contract and, um. A legal opinion, a written legal opinion about the legality of entering into that contract, and so if the board, the contract would be a public record. The legal opinion that's going to the board would not be a public record, so the public would not have access to it.
Okay, and who makes the declarations, what would that, public record or not?
Um, she does.
Okay.
Sometimes, sometimes in consultation, you know.
Okay, so, okay. And so there's training and all right.
Okay.
Sorry, guys, it's eleven.
Okay, so this one's going to paragraph three.
Yes.
Yeah.
Only ten fifty-seven, we have three minutes.
Oh, thanks. So we have actions by board nine, three, two, three, point two.
This is just an act, uh.
So again, it just. It emphasizes majority throughout.
But no changes on that one.
No. Are are there any cases you suggest that we should just read or be aware of, and how that under legal reference, or just whatever it was on CSBA or something like that? Because sometimes those cases.
Oh, let me try, because one, back at this time, we weren't necessarily putting all the cases on.
We note that number thirty-one, ten fifty-seven.
Yes.
I know, I sometimes find out, I was pointing that out and want to hear that case was like, that's what he's meant.
Read it, Carol, read it. To deepness.
So we, one minute back to the censure individual board members, I can carry on that one, or are we on actions by the board?
Or these actions by the board, which we reviewed also the best policy in traffic.
Correct.
Basically with that, they're thinking that it's a majority issue.
Is there an interest for us to bring back censure individual monies, is there any changes that the board would like us to make if we know first read?
Yes.
Yes.
I'm just.
I can, I can.
Go back. There's no, should please, for instance.
Yeah.
Legal references would be great to understand the ramifications of such a thing.
Correct. Yeah, I mean, this is, this is CSBA's boilerplate language on censure, um, it's carefully worded.
So.
Okay. Okay.
Um, and the thing that I would emphasize and that the cases have emphasized is what censure is, is not punishment. It is the board exercising its free speech right to say that they believe something another board member has done is inappropriate or out of order or out for.
Oh.
It's an exercise of speech, um.
So we have free speech, yes.
You have, yeah, individually you do and the board has a right to speak, um, but you know, you you know, your board, boards will pass resolutions in support of.
It's called the board. The collective, okay.
Or in opposition to, this is what I've seen a lot, in opposition to cannabis, uh, um, establishments or, um. Even immigration policies and things like that, that is an act, that's the board of education exercising its free speech right.
Okay.
So when we advocate for some legislation that we advocate as a whole for, something of that.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, where, um. Legislative bodies have gotten in trouble with censure is where they censure and remove somebody from committees and strip them of things. Then it, then that's when it crosses the line to punishment.
Right, that makes sense.
For free speech as opposed to just the board exercising its free speech right. There's a, there's a good, uh. Anybody familiar with the name Steve Rocker?
You know, I worked with him for years.
She'll be a champ.
So, oh, so.
Anyway, he's suit orange unified after they censured him for disclosing personnel information in open session.
So how many in front?
The district filed an anti-SLAP motion, which, um, is, SLAP is a strategic lawsuit against public participation, you can file an early motion. Basically, it's a lawsuit filed in retaliation for some, uh, for exercising free speech rights can be dismissed at an early stage. So the court dismissed the lawsuit and ordered him to pay the district's legal fees, um, um, so that will be one of the citations in a, in a public court, I felt it.
Okay, I just handed up, because we got that and I just say you could, from committee, and so I'm, I'm just thinking that might not be present.
That that I I I had the occasion when I was general counsel at San Diego Unified to research censure pretty significantly and there are, um. There are cases that where that act has found, been found to be punishment, so I I routinely recommend that censure should be just that, a motion for censure. And an adopt, adopting usually a resolution, uh, a censure resolution, but not removal from committees or things like that. It just creates legal issues if you don't.
And how does the board do that on the board? It can't.
Well, lays it out in there as far as in formal one-on-one, so.
Process is very clear, and then what the problem with what the actions. Timeline is included.
Okay, so we have a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Second, all favor.
Aye.
Post.